I now call to order the regular meeting of the City Council and Successor Agency to the Redevelopment Agency and Housing Authority, meeting of Tuesday, June 6, 2023. Before we do the National Anthem, I have an announcement. If you're here regarding our Public Hearing Number One item regarding Northgate Market, or our New Business Item Number One, which has to do with our Bridge Shelter, those are not going to go forward today. They're going to be handled at a different meeting. So if you're here to talk about those, you don't need to be here. So having made that announcement, let's stand up and listen to Jeanette Chevrone sing the National Anthem, and please remain standing as I lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light What so proudly we hailed At the twilight's last gleaming Whose broad stripes and bright stars Through the perilous fight Or the ramparts we watched Were so gallantly streaming And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air Gave proof through the night That our flag was still there Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave O'er the land of the free And the home of the brave?
Now, the Pledge of Allegiance, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
... of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, and equal to all, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, now, we're fortunate to have for our Moment of Solemn Expression Pastor Monica Corsaro from Fairview Church to lead us in the Moment of Solemn Expression. Pastor, you have the floor.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. A poem. Somewhere over the rainbow, way up high, There is a land that I heard of once in a lullaby. Somewhere over the rainbow, skies are blue, And the dreams that you dare to dream really do come true. Someday I'll wish upon a star and wake up where the clouds are far behind me, Where troubles melt like lemon drops away above the chimney tops. That's where you'll find me. Somewhere over the rainbow, bluebirds fly, Birds fly over the rainbow. Why then, why can't I? Somewhere over the rainbow, bluebirds fly, Birds fly over the rainbow. Then why can't I? If happy little bluebirds fly beyond the rainbow, why can't I? In the Christian communities these past weeks, we celebrated God's creation, and we heard the story of Genesis. And Genesis, after all, is about all the creatures, land, all of us, no matter how we're made, how we look, we are part of the rainbow. I looked up the history of this song today, and it turns out it was written by an Orthodox Russian Jew. And he wrote about, he wrote this song during the Nazi occupation. This also has become an icon for other folks as well. An obstacle was just created for them today, but I'll let you read about it and look that up. But as you discern today, remember, you have all of the rainbow, even made up of softball players. Amen? So let us pray. Loving and gracious God, you are the God of softball players, you are the God of birds, you are the God of beaches, you are the God of our ocean, you are the God of He and She, and God created them, He and She, and called them blessed. We pray for all these council folks today who will be discerning our policy of Costa Mesa, and may we remember that rainbows indeed can be gotten over, and we can fly together in love. Amen.
Amen, amen. And the God of volleyball players and swimmers too, right? Yeah, all right. Good stuff. Thank you very much, Pastor. Beautiful words, beautiful words. Madam Clerk, would you please do the voice roll call vote?
Councilmember Reynolds.
Voice roll call.
Here. Councilmember Chavez.
Here.
Councilmember Harper.
Here.
Councilmember Gamaros.
Here.
Councilmember Marr, who is participating remotely.
Yes.
Thank you. And Councilmember Marr, can you please make a statement for the record?
Sure. For the record, I am at the Hyatt Arlington in Washington, DC, and members of the public are welcome to join me if they so choose.
Thank you. Mayor Protim Harland.
Here.
Mayor Stevens.
Here. All right, great. City Attorney, do you have a closed session report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No reportable action was taken in closed session this afternoon.
Wonderful, thank you very much. So tonight, we have five presentations. The first one is for the Estancia High School Girls' Softball CIF Southern Section Playoff Champions. Okay. So tonight, we are proud to recognize the Estancia Eagles softball team for making it to the CIF playoffs during, during the game, this is the, I think, the final game, during the final game, every starter reached base for the Eagles in a 20-2 rout over San Gabriel Mission. Now, I know San Gabriel Mission. I went, I went to San Gabriel High School not too far away, so you beat up on my hometown team. Okay, but good for you Eagles. So the Estancia scored eight runs in the first, seven in the second, and five more in the third. Grace Young and Jaden McClure each had a homerun among their three hit performances that advanced the team, oh, this is, we're just in the first round, that advanced the team to the second round of the CIF Southern Section Division VII Playoffs. We're not going to go through every round, I don't think. This impressive win demonstrates the Eagles' hard work and dedication throughout the 2023 softball season. The City Council is proud of these outstanding and remarkable athletes. We commend you for a job well done. And now, we're going to have your coach, Thais Thompson, come up to the podium and give some brief remarks. And, and present each of, each of her players' certificates. Now, we'll take a group photo. Coach Thompson, you have the floor.
I just want to say thank you to everyone to recognize my girls, and I want to thank them for working hard for me, my program, and our school. Fabiola. Fabiola Basurto. Alia Canela. Jasmine Troncoso. Maya Williams. Heather Foltz. Devaney Bustos. Jaden McClure. Cheyenne Leslie. Peyton Thomas. Grace Young. Michaela Gorey. Alondra Galvez. Coach Bobby Young. I think that's it. That's it. Thank you again.
Let's take, let's take a photo. All right, way to go Eagles. Now, onto the Mustangs. The Costa Mesa. The Costa Mesa High School Boys CIF Southern Section Swimming Champions, the Costa Mesa Mustangs. Tonight, we are proud to recognize the Costa Mesa High School Boys Swim Team for winning the CIF Southern Section Division III Title. It's the first in the program's history. The Costa Mesa High School Boys stormed their way to the CIF Southern Section Division Title. The Mustangs finished with 216 points, outdistancing the second place, second place viewpoint, which had only a meager 170 points. So it's pretty much of a beat down again, like that. Freshman Phenom Avram, I practiced this, Zagor, Zagor Ar, correct. All right. What is it again? I hate to do that. What is it?
Zagor Arakis.
Okay. Zagor Arakis. Zagor Arakis. Led the Mustangs by winning the Division's, Division III Boys 100 Butterfly in 49.30 seconds. As, as a freshman, all right? Next year, every year you do it after this, I'm going to get your name, I'm going to nail your name. Okay? Because there are going to be other times you're going to be in here getting this. Congratulations. The Butterfly victory was the first individual CIF Championship in Mesa Boys Swimming History. The Mustangs also won the 200 Free Relay with Brazda De La Hara, Trask, and Moda touching in 1 minute 29.12 seconds. Once again, the city of Costa Mesa is proud of the commitment and effort of these extraordinary athletes and their great coaches. So we have their coaches coming up, Keith Riley and Diggy Riley, sorry, Keith Ryan and Diggy Riley. So please come to the podium, and we've, and we've got certificates for you to hand out, and then we'll take a group picture.
Hi, good evening, and thank you for this recognition. We're truly honored. My name's Diggy Riley. This is my assistant coach, Chuck Olson. Unfortunately, Keith Ryan, our co-ed coach, ironically enough, is on a pool deck coaching right down the street right now, so he was not able to be here. But we'll call up this group here, Chuck Olson, you can be up here. Still in here, Rothenberg? Oh, that's interesting. I thought he was. Avram Satarakis. Kawamoto. Luke De La Hara. Wes Brazda. Diego Lamboglia. Lucas Sangacy. And Lucas Trask.
Okay, you got it. Now, and do it right after, maybe, yeah. Okay. And now, this is the, what's becoming an annual event, the Newport Harbor High School Boys Volleyball CIF Southern Section Division Champions, the Sailors. Tonight, we are proud to recognize, for the second year in a row, the Newport Harbor High School Boys Volleyball Team for their CIF Southern Section Division I Championship against the dreaded Corona Del Mar. Before a capacity crowd, the Sailors overpowered, that's quite a verb, you overpowered Corona Del Mar in straight sets to repeat as Division I Champions. The aggressive net play of the Sailors never let up, as Newport Harbor kept the pressure on CDM throughout the match. 2023 was a big year for Newport Harbor High School Boys Volleyball Program because it was the, okay, this is a storied program, but this is the first year ever in the history of the program that they went back-to-back CIF Southern Section Champions. So that's, that's you guys. That's these boys right here in the chamber that we're looking at. You are a special group, and that's a long history of great volleyball players, and you guys are the only ones going back-to-back. It's also their sixth CIF Championship in the program's history since the school's inception. So two of those are this team. Once again, the city of Costa Mesa is proud of the commitment and effort of these extraordinary athletes. Now, the Mayor Protim, whose daughters either go or have graduated from Newport Harbor High School, wishes to say a few words to the team. Jeff Harland.
Yeah, you're, you're good. Let's see. Got it. Okay, great. Well, thank you. Yes, I'm a proud Newport Harbor parent. It's especially sweet in our house when you guys beat CDM. My wife graduated there. I'm sure Principal Bolton would like me to keep my comments real short, because you guys have finals, and I'm sure you're eager to get home and finish studying. What I really want to say thank you for is the parents, the people sitting behind you. Your families have done a lot for you over the years, and obviously are incredibly proud, but they deserve some recognition for their commitment and the model that they set. So I want to make sure they're recognized here tonight. It's a tremendous achievement, and we'll hopefully see you guys back here next year.
All right. Okay, without further delay, let's call up Coach Andrew Mayberry to do the honors.
Thank you, Mayor Stevens, Mr. Harland, for your kind words, for the entire City Council for inviting us here. It's a great recognition, it's a great group of young men that are before you today. As you alluded to, there's a great kind of weight and history of pressure that goes with this program, and these boys handled it marvelously, and excited to introduce them to you tonight. First, Race Barton. Max Birkenfeld. Luca Kirchi. CIF Player of the Year, Luca Kirchi. Adam Gah. All CIF Riggs Guy, sorry about that. Lucas Johnson. Josh Kiersted. Three-time All CIF Jake Reed. Kyle Sharborough. Jack Von Deray. And assistant coach, Oliver Pick. That's the group.
You probably couldn't even take a step.
So we have two more presentations. The next one is for 2023 National Gun Violence Awareness Day. Everyone deserves to live in a community that is safe, healthy, and prosperous. According to the Gun Violence Archive, more than 200 mass shootings have occurred this year alone. There have been more shootings in 2023 than any previous year since 2013. In the last year alone, we've lost more than 40,000 Americans to gun violence, which is now the leading cause of death for, for American children and teens, surpassing car accidents in the year 2020. Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense in America is a grassroots movement of Americans fighting for public safety measures that can protect people from gun violence. Joining us today, tonight, is a Costa Mesa resident and Moms Demand Action local Orange County group member, Carolyn McAuliffe. Ms. McAuliffe, while you're coming up, I just want to read from, a couple of excerpts from the proclamation that we're going to present. "In the United States, gun violence is a national concern and is a major health crisis. Firearms-related injuries are the leading cause of death for American children and teens, surpassing car accidents in the year 2020. Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense in America is a grassroots movement of Americans fighting for public safety measures that can protect people from gun violence." Joining us today, tonight, is a Costa Mesa resident and Moms Demand Action local Orange County group member, Carolyn McAuliffe. Ms. McAuliffe, while you're coming up, I just want to read from, a couple of excerpts from the proclamation that we're going to present. "In the United States, gun violence is a national concern and is a major health crisis. Firearms-related injuries are the leading cause of death for American children and teens. Every day, an average of seven children under the age of 19 are killed by gun violence. The consequences of gun violence are more pervasive and affect entire communities, families, and children. Protecting public safety is the city's highest responsibility. Local law enforcement officers know their communities best and are most familiar with local criminal activity and how to address it in our best position to understand how to keep their citizens safe. The city of Costa Mesa supports continued statewide efforts to strengthen gun safety laws, pledges to keep firearms out of the wrong hands, and encourages responsible gun ownership to help our children remain safe." Ms. McAuliffe, you have the floor.
Good evening. You already said, my, my name's Carolyn McAuliffe. I'm a volunteer leader in Orange County Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense in America. As the mayor mentioned, the first, you know, the Gun Violence Awareness Day was the first Friday in June, so that's just this previous Friday. We are really grateful to you, Mayor Stevens, the City Council, and the city of Costa Mesa. Riggs Guy. All CIF Riggs Guy, sorry about that. Lucas Johnson. Three-time All CIF Jake Reed. Jack Von Deray. Tommy Ransom. And Assistant Coach Oliver Pick. That's the group.
So we have two more presentations. The next one is for 2023 National Gun Violence Awareness Day. Everyone deserves to live in a community that is safe, healthy, and prosperous. According to the Gun Violence Archive, more than 200 mass shootings have occurred this year alone. There have been more shootings in 2023 than any previous year since 2013. In the last year alone, we've lost more than 40,000 Americans to gun violence, which is now the leading cause of death for American children and teens, surpassing car accidents in the year 2020. Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense in America is a grassroots movement of Americans fighting for public safety measures that can protect people from gun violence. Joining us tonight is a Costa Mesa resident and Moms Demand Action local Orange County group member, Carolyn McAuliffe. Ms. McAuliffe, while you're coming up, I just want to read from a couple of excerpts from the proclamation that we're going to present. "In the United States, gun violence is a national concern and is a major health crisis. Firearms-related injuries are the leading cause of death for American children and teens. Every day, an average of seven children under the age of 19 are killed by gun violence. The consequences of gun violence are more pervasive and affect entire communities, families, and children. Protecting public safety is the city's highest responsibility. Local law enforcement officers know their communities best and are most familiar with local criminal activity and how to address it, and are best positioned to understand how to keep their citizens safe. The City of Costa Mesa supports continued statewide efforts to strengthen gun safety laws, pledges to keep firearms out of the wrong hands, and encourages responsible gun ownership to help our children remain safe." Ms. McAuliffe, you have the floor.
Good evening. You already said my name is Carolyn McAuliffe. I'm a volunteer leader in Orange County Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense in America. As the mayor mentioned, the first, you know, the Gun Violence Awareness Day was the first Friday in June, so that's just this previous Friday. We are really grateful to you, Mayor Stevens, the City Council, and the City of Costa Mesa for recognizing this important day. These types of proclamations are so important because they help raise awareness around America's gun violence epidemic and make clear that gun violence is preventable if we all work together to say enough. National Gun Violence Awareness Day also kicks off what is known as Wear Orange Weekend, during which Moms Demand Action volunteers across the country take action and stand together in a bold statement that we can and must solve the problem of gun violence. During this weekend, we wear orange to demand a future free from gun violence. Orange symbolizes the value of each person's life as we wear it to honor those like Hadia Pendleton and others who have been killed or wounded by gun violence and call for an end to this crisis. This year, OC Moms Demand Action partnered with UC Irvine to host a blood drive in commemoration of Wear Orange Weekend. This happened just this -- over the weekend. We are grateful to our communities and all volunteers for their efforts to raise awareness around this crisis. And lastly, we hope that shedding light on the toll of gun violence, we can come together as a community to stop what is a preventable epidemic. Although there are times when it may feel as if nothing can or nothing will be done, we continue to educate, raise awareness, organize, advocate, and rally for safer communities. Together, we can build a future free from gun violence. So again, thank you so much to the mayor and city council for helping us to raise awareness. We'll remember the millions of lives taken are forever changed. In their honor, this proclamation should go. Thank you.
Okay, we'll take a photo. Our final presentation of the night is for 2023 Pride Month. Pride Month is celebrated each year in the month of June in honor of the 1969 Stonewall uprising in Manhattan. In addition to parades and festivals, memorials are held this month to remember those members of the community who have been lost to hate crimes or HIV/AIDS. Today's celebrations include pride parades, parties, workshops, and concerts. These events attract millions of participants from around the world. OC Pride is an LBGTQ+ nonprofit whose mission it is to strengthen and empower the identity of lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender community within Orange County and to promote respect for all. Joining us tonight is the OC Pride Executive Director Brian Terry and OC Pride Board President Kim Savajo, and to accept the proclamation. And while they're coming up, I'm going to get to the podium. I'm going to read a little bit from the proclamation. "All human beings are born free and equal in dignity and rights. The fight for equality for LBGTQ -- sorry, LBGTQ community is reflected in the unwavering dedication of those who work to build a more inclusive society. The City of Costa Mesa is committed to diversity and prevention of discrimination based on sexual orientation and gender identity, and the LBGTQ community has the right to feel safe and not live in fear and are an important part of the Costa Mesa family. Costa Mesa is committed to equality, and the month of June is an opportunity to recognize the impact that lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender individuals have had and will continue to have in our city and nation, and a time to reflect on the progress that has been made while focusing on the steps that can still be taken to eliminate prejudice and exclusion, celebrate diversity, and create a more inclusive society for all. Now, therefore, I, John B. Stevens, the mayor of the City of Costa Mesa, do hereby proclaim the month of June 2023 as Pride Month in support of the LBGTQ+ community." You have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Kim. I'm the president of OC Pride. It's nice to see you guys. Brian wasn't able to make it here tonight, but I'm here to accept this proclamation on behalf of our organization. We appreciate the City of Costa Mesa, yourself, Mayor, and Council. It means a lot. Visibility is very important right now, especially in our current political climate. So we appreciate you.
Thank you. Okay. Okay. comment, you get three minutes to speak. We first go to the folks that are in the chambers, then we go to the people that are waiting on Zoom. You can speak about anything you want, including the consent calendar, except please don't speak about anything we have on our agenda. Hold your comments till that item comes up. So with that, let's start. Ms. Martin, you have the floor.
There was another mass shooting today in a high school in Richmond, Virginia. Many moons ago, I was invited to a new friend's home in Newport Beach. What I saw boggled my mind. Her living room was roped off from the rest of the downstairs area, and all the furniture in the living room was covered with clear plastic sheeting. At that time, three people lived in that large home: husband, wife, and young son. No one used the living room, period. The city is treating some of our parks the same way: fencing and locking gates to keep local residents out. Yesterday, I spoke with a city park maintenance person who was parked at the Jack Hammat Sports Field. He told me that the city keeps this public space locked to prevent any damage from public use. The city also keeps the Luke Davis Field under lock and key. I'm flashing back some 25 years. A local Costa Mason, Martin H. Millard, spoke to city council about the Latino youngsters -- he called them illegal immigrants -- who, he said, were coming from Santa Ana to play soccer at a park close to his home. He demanded the city install large boulders in the field area to prohibit any kind of team sports activity. He said, "We don't want these guys to ruin our park," unquote. Back to the Jack Hammat conversation with the city maintenance guy. I asked him how the field is being used. Answer: Charger Practice Field, AYSO Soccer, the Matt Liner Flag Football, and other private-for-profit youth sports leagues. The Liner League gets some serious change: $250 for one kid to play. Does the city get rental monies from Liner? In the CIP project for this year, it states that the Jack Hammat complex improvements are budgeted for $2,776,652. That is big bucks we taxpayers are funding for private sports clubs. Let's keep our sports field in effect under the proverbial -- let's stop keeping our sports fields under the proverbial clear plastic sheeting. Please open Jack Hammat and Luke Davis for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Cynthia.
Hi, Cynthia Blackwell. I'm here because I'm a resident of Greenbrook in North Costa Mesa. My councilperson is Councilman Harper, who I've reached out to a few times not to get any response from. I'm here today about the barriers that were erected on South Coast Drive in mid-April. Before we left on a trip to Hawaii, we come home, and the barriers are still there. Nothing's been done, except for a whole bunch of fences that back up to Tulare have been now red-tagged, the block wall there. My son and daughter-in-law have a home on Tulare. Across the street from my son is his grandmother-in-law, whose house is two houses away from the red-tagged block wall. So I reached out to the city in May, May 8, and the response was -- and Mayor Stevens, you also got the copy of this response -- said that currently, the building department and the higher-ups are looking into it. We do not have an exact timeframe of when it will be fixed, but it is getting figured out. Are you waiting for the fence to fall down on somebody, for the block walls to crash over people that are still walking behind the barriers? There has been no notification to anybody in any of these neighborhoods. It's from the Greenbrook area, the Cape Apartments, Mesa North, Mesa Woods, and Wimbledon. Everybody who goes up and down South Coast Drive is affected by that barrier and that all being blocked off. We would just like to have some answer. What is going on? When is it going to be fixed? What is the delay? What caused the block wall to be red-tagged? And I noticed that one of the houses across the street from my sons was an escrow, and it's now fallen out of escrow because of the block wall situation. So we'd just like to have some answers. And as many of you know, I'm like an advocate for my neighborhood. And my friend also reached out to the city and also received the same thing about the higher-ups are looking into it. So I don't know who the higher-ups are. And if I email my councilman and I call, leave messages for my councilman, Mr. Harper, I would appreciate a response back. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Stevens, and council members. My name is David Heathcock, and I am the president and CEO of the Costa Mesa Chamber of Commerce. This is actually my first time addressing the body in this chamber, so I welcome that opportunity. I thought that I would take from periodic -- time to time to just give some little tidbits of what's kind of going on within the chamber and what we're seeing within the business community of Costa Mesa. And given that, one of the things that, you know, I've been kind of basing some of the activity off of has been on the ribbon cuttings. And ribbon cuttings are significant because, as most of you know, we have almost 12,000 business licensees within the City of Costa Mesa. I guess technically like 11,600 and something, but significant amount. And what's significant about that is, you know, we have folks and individuals who have gathered and raised the capital to do this and have decided City of Costa Mesa is where they'd like to deploy that capital and invest in our city. So I take it very personally. And to date, we've had 15 ribbon cuttings, and this is from the month of January to May, from the small clothing boutique to, you know, as much as up to UCI Medical Health, which has expanded their operations in our city on -- off of Newport Boulevard. And given that, too, you know, we also host monthly network meetings, which allows our business environment to come together. And to date, we've had about 300 participants up to about May 31. And in addition, one of the things that we also have the capacity to do, which we have not really tracked in the past or stated, is our website statistics. And what's significant about that is a lot of individuals from either in our city or outside of the city are coming to our site to look for referrals. And from that, over the last five months, we've had 136,000 referrals from our website to the various businesses within Costa Mesa. And one of the statistics that I looked at was where would -- how does that compare? It's up 30% from 2022, and it's up 65% from 2019, pre-pandemic. So that's a good indicator from where we're at. So we're seeing progress. We're seeing improvement. We're seeing activity. Now, kind of touch on the last few seconds is that the communication side. We held the recent 44th Annual Les Miller Student Achievement Awards, and on behalf of the chamber, I wanted to personally thank the council, the mayor, for your continued -- and the staff for your continued support of that event. It's an amazing community event. Councilmember Reynolds being one of the recipients of that award, but we had a very good representation of our community. I think we had almost 200 individuals there with -- from all across, also from the city council to Newport Mesa Unified School District. And we've recognized 39 students of their achievements. So with that, I will close. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am, you have the floor.
Buenas tardes.
Sorry, I need a microphone. I just noticed.
Why don't we go to Kim, and then we can go back. Go ahead, Kim. You take the floor.
Okay, I'm going to wait till he gets -- I have a little presentation to show and hope it's up on the YouTube screen. Here we go. Fairview Nature Park. Good evening. My name is Kim Hendricks. The motion on May 2 regarding flying activity in Fairview Park is unreasonable and hypocritical of city council to demand city staff, park rangers, and city resources to devote more time, energy, and public funds to a small, private user group with declining membership and who degrade the park, especially when city council has said multiple times that it doesn't want to waste city staff time with committees or anything else. Ms. Mar already spoke about such ideas on September 21, 2021. Regarding regulating into compliance isn't realistic, and HSS doesn't have the capacity to support any of it. Yet these ideas were put into motion on May 2. By the way, there is no fly field in the Fairview Park master plan. That's just another problem with the May 2 motion. How can city council demand that a vernal pool be used as a fly area, no matter what the impacts are? To do what city council wants regardless of the impacts is leading the city in a bad direction like what happened in 2013 when city council demanded that city staff put a DG trail on a vernal pool. Fairview Park is a unique nature park with endangered, threatened, and species of special concern, plants as well as animals. No other city around has such a place. There are five other flying fields within 21 miles, and the flyers are already using them. Like you said, Ms. Mar, the endangered birds can't be here to speak, and there is a legitimate environmental concern, which all of you have acknowledged. It doesn't take much to contact U.S. Fish and Wildlife to see they do not think any flying activity in Fairview Park is compatible with the resources. Not just planes kick the birds out, but so do gliders. Mr. Gomero said it well at the September 21, 2021 meeting with his motion that Ms. Reynolds undermined, when he said, "So while I do appreciate that the flying field does bring opportunity and joy for some people, it doesn't represent a large group of people in our community, and that's what I was elected for, to bring what the masses want to see. From my understanding, there is only 20 residents in the City of Costa Mesa that actually use this field. There are several others outside our city that use it. There is opportunity for bird migration in this park. The birds do feed off those shrimp, from what I understand, from what I've heard, and to say that we really don't know if the planes interfere with the bird activities is an unsupported statement, because I can tell you right now that planes flying around would interfere and do interfere. We can see that because the birds have migrated back. And here we have white-faced ibises, hundreds of them that haven't been there for over 50 years. I for one want to recreate and enjoy the park just like everybody else, but I also want to see an opportunity provided for the Fairview Park Committee to expand what's going on now, and I believe that having a flying field with model airplanes is going to be interrupting. It is high time for the city council to listen and respect their city staff and not try to bully them by making unreasonable demands of policies, procedures, and permits on a vernal pool. Thank you."
Thank you. Now, we're good to go.
Like you said, Ms. Mar, the endangered birds can't be here to speak, and there is a legitimate environmental concern, which all of you have acknowledged. It doesn't take much to contact U.S. Fish and Wildlife to see they do not think any flying activity in Fairview Park is compatible with the resources. Not just planes kick the birds out, but so do gliders. Mr. Gomero said it well at the September 21, 2021 meeting with his motion that Ms. Reynolds undermined, when he said, "So while I do appreciate that the flying field does bring opportunity and joy for some people, it doesn't represent a large group of people in our community, and that's what I was elected for, to bring what the masses want to see." From my understanding, there is only 20 residents in the city of Costa Mesa that actually use this field. There are several others outside our city that use it. There's opportunity for bird migration in this park. The birds do feed off those shrimp, from what I understand, from what I've heard. And to say that we really don't know if the planes interfere with the bird activities is an unsupported statement, because I can tell you right now that planes flying around would interfere and do interfere. We can see that because the birds have migrated back. And here we have white-faced ibises, hundreds of them that haven't been there for over 50 years. I for one want to recreate and enjoy the park just like everybody else, but I also want to see an opportunity provided for the Fairview Park Committee to expand what's going on now. And I believe that having a flying field with model airplanes is going to be interrupting. It is high time for the City Council to listen and respect their city staff and not try to bully them by making unreasonable demands of policies, procedures, and permits on a vernal pool. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we're good to go. We're good to go with Ms. Trejo. You have the floor.
Buenas tardes. Pues mi nombre es Juana Trejo.
Good evening, my name is Juana Trejo.
Vivo en el distrito numero tres.
I live in district number three.
Y pues desgraciadamente vengo a informarles que las organizaciones que ustedes delegaron para ayudar con fondos para vivienda.
So unfortunately, I'm here to tell you that the organizations that you picked or chose for living is housing.
No están respondiendo como debería de ser ayudando a las personas que tienen la necesidad de los fondos.
They're not responding to the people that have the needs for these particular funds.
Tenemos más gente que ha sido desalojada, que está viviendo ahorita en hoteles en Santana. Motels, ni siquiera son hoteles.
We have people that have been evicted and are living now in hotels. No, not even hotels, motels in Santa Ana.
Porque han sido desalojados injustificadamente de su vivienda.
Because they've been evicted from their living spaces without any reason.
Entonces no sé qué pasos más debemos de seguir para poder ayudar a estas familias que están pagando las consecuencias de los altos incrementos de vivienda.
So we really don't know what steps to take or to follow for these people that are paying skyrocketing fees for rent and then can't afford it.
Ahorita también estamos siendo, pues personas que estamos muy preocupadas por la seguridad de la comunidad.
We're also very worried about the safety of our community.
Hay presencia de pandillas, cosa que no había en el distrito número tres.
Something that was not around in district number three.
El sábado hubo un pleito allí cercano donde una madre de familia fue golpeada.
So there was an incident on Saturday that when a mother was really injured.
Entonces nosotros no sabemos a quién tenerle más miedo, si a los dueños de apartamentos o a las pandillas que están haciendo presencia en las comunidades.
But we really don't know who to fear most, the gangs that are making presence in these communities, or actually...
La pregunta que yo tengo para ustedes, quizás estamos nosotros hablando en el lugar equivocado?
So what I want to ask you is maybe we're speaking in the wrong place.
Porque quisiera saber dónde podemos nosotros encontrar soluciones a los problemas que estamos teniendo ahorita en la comunidad.
Because we want to go to the place that is going to be able to resolve all these issues that we've been talking about for so long.
Sé que ustedes están, este, haciendo varios entrenamientos sobre vivienda, trayendo abogados. La gente no está asistiendo, pero no se preguntan por qué no vienen.
So I know that you're doing a lot of workshops, and you're bringing attorneys, and you're having people talk about these different issues, but do you ever wonder why the community's not coming?
La gente sigue siendo víctima de un sistema que también es violencia estructural.
So actually, these people are actually living of something that is called structural violence.
Y nuestra gente está pagando con su propia vida.
And our people are paying with their own lives.
Porque alguien no está haciendo su trabajo.
Because someone is not doing their job.
Ojalá que tengan misericordia por la gente que ustedes representan.
I hope that you have mercy for the people that you represent.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Tanaka, you have the floor.
I have a small presentation, if you wouldn't mind bringing that up. Thank you. All right. Good evening, City Council and members of the staff. My name is Jen Tanaka. I am a Costa Mesa resident, and I am a neighbor who bikes and walks to Harper Park. Harper Park, for you, those of you who don't know it, is just a small city park. It's located off of Tustin Avenue in the lower part of East Side Costa Mesa. And its best feature, as you can see here, is that it borders some unmarked field space that's owned by Newport Mesa Unified School District. And this creates a large, unstructured, open grass area that's pretty hard to find anywhere in Costa Mesa, but it's definitely hard to find on the east side. And just so you get a sense—there we go. This is a picture of my kids playing in that field, getting caught in the sprinklers they happen to turn on.
Hold on one second, Jen. So, yeah, because it's not—it's not advancing. Okay.
I got it now.
Hold on.
That's what I want. We're good.
Okay, so, yeah, we'll just look at the monitor up there. Okay, got it. Thank you.
Cool. So, these are my kids getting caught in the sprinklers there. And even though this park has suffered from a little bit of underinvestment, the playground was last renovated all the way back in 1994. The residents have turned it into a community asset, and it was pretty much in constant use by young families, people who throw—throwing frisbees and throwing footballs, people walking their dogs, and enjoying the beautiful mature trees, as you can see in this photo. But then about four weeks ago, Newport Mesa installed a fence with the city staff's blessing right here. And that fence reduces the green space that's available to the residents by about 90%. It has no gate. It cuts directly through the trees in the park, and as you can see, it's not the best-looking thing in the world. And then about—it also has no signage, as you can see, alerting the residents to its purpose. It's just got this big angry "no" sign. And this is my neighborhood park, so I started asking around what was going on. And I started with—I asked Councilmember Harlan, I asked Newport Mesa trustee Krista Wagon, and I asked my Parks Commissioner Liz Parker, and none of them knew that this had even happened. So I spoke to the city staff, and I learned that not only had our staff not resisted this, that they worked with Newport Mesa to make it happen, and that it was to remedy, quote, "misuse of the field." And look, I'm sure misuse was occurring. Misuse occurs in every public park every day, from one perspective or another. But throwing frisbees isn't misuse. Kicking soccer balls isn't misuse. Racing across the field to tag the trees or flying kites, all things we've done, is not misuse. And these activities are the kind of life and vibrancy that we cherish in the city. So the people that use this park this way, the way that it was meant to be used, are either gone or almost gone. And I'm sure the grass is greener now on the other side of that fence, but this walkable, bikeable park is now deserted after about 6:00 PM, and that is such a shame. I wish that we had been more curious about what made this park so special and how it was being used and how—and if we aren't going to be curious, then staff should not be sacrificing community assets without the input of the residents or at least elected and appointed officials. It shouldn't have gone down this way, and I'm confident we can address whatever problems there are while honoring what the residents have created. So please, please work with Newport Mesa to bring this fence down, and then work with us to build something great that works for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, yes, ma'am, you have the floor.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Carmen Ramirez. Vivo en el distrito dos.
Good afternoon. My name is Carmen Ramirez, and I live in district two.
Vivo en Costa Mesa por más de 32 años.
I lived in California and Costa Mesa for more than 32 years.
Y solamente quiero hacer eco a las palabras que hizo Juana Trejo, pero también quiero dar las gracias.
I just want to echo Juana Trejo's words, but I also want to say thank you.
A Alice y a Manuel Chávez por toda su participación en Paularino y en la Chalimar para celebrar el Día del Niño, que tuvimos más de 300 niños en cada lugar.
I want to say thank you to Alice and Manuel Chávez. They participated in the activities that we have in Chalimar, and there were over 300 children.
Y también quiero dar las gracias a Ivys y a Sergio, que han hecho talleres aquí en la ciudad de Costa Mesa sobre la vivienda.
And I also want to say thank you to Ivys and Sergio that have been doing workshops here about housing in Costa Mesa.
He visto que no ha habido tanta la participación de la comunidad.
I have noticed that there has not been that much participation from the community.
Su nuestra plática con ellos fue que ahora ellos necesitan salir a la comunidad.
So what we've been talking about is that now they need to come and reach the community themselves.
Y ellos dijeron que sí.
And they said yes.
Este, también nos trajeron la ayuda de los abogados, pero abarca todo el condado de Orange.
They also brought in the information from attorneys, but it surfaces all—services all of Orange County.
Mi pregunta es tal vez algo como, por qué nosotros como Costa Mesa, como ciudad, no tenemos nuestro propio abogado que nos ayude y nos represente a los residentes.
So why is it that us in Costa Mesa do not have our own attorney that represents us as a city?
Gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Humphrey.
Good evening, Council. Jay Humphrey, Costa Mesa resident. Three items tonight. First, as you rightly, as you rightly acknowledge and recognize excellence in athletics here tonight and many other nights, I ask that you please, please find a way to also recognize excellence in academic achievement. It is another part of our community, and it is part of our community that grows us, that makes our community a better place in the future. So please, make sure you're spreading the wealth, as it were. Thank you on that one. Second, you guys in 2020 actually did what's called a LEAP application to do planning for this coming housing element. And in that, you asked for $70,000 in 2020 to study putting a part of the inclusionary housing ordinance together, which was the part that allows the developer to pay you money and not put in affordable housing at that unit at that spot, which of course defeats the purpose of the inclusionary housing ordinance. I understand small projects can't work it outright, but it can be abused and can be used in such a way that the Costa Mesa does not get what it's trying to achieve. And I assume you guys are all trying to achieve that mandate of reasonable, affordable housing also available in this community. So in 2020, you guys asked for the money to do that. I would hope that we're getting there. I noticed we've had a couple of things showing that we're getting there. I would like to see that happen. What I can't find is any rec—anything about public input, outreach programs to the public, specifically what dates, what's going on. I've asked the council, but please make sure that I'm notified of any outreach projects for the inclusionary housing ordinance that are to come, and not see the public comment being made during the night that it is presented to the council for approval, as opposed to what may be in the future. And lastly, Fairview Park comes back up again. And I just find it amazing that when your own staff, which is made up of experts, and your own committee recommended against allowing flying of any kind in Fairview Park, you guys made a choice to allow flying in Fairview Park. And I think it's inappropriate. I think that you guys are taking the wrong path here. You guys have a jewel that you can protect, and all you're going to do is see the bird population, the habitat continue to be molested, and the bird population going down. So I would appreciate if you guys would think about—
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir. Hold on one second. I just need to get your mic on. Now you have the floor.
I'm ready to go now? Great. Hi, my name is Steve McNally. I'm a Costa Mesa resident. I'm also on a county-appointed behavioral health advisory board. Every county in the state has one with welfare and institution code responsibilities, though not all responsibilities are allowed by the local governing body. My comments tonight are going to be as an individual, so Honorable Mayor Stevens and the rest of the council and staff. I thought I'd take an opportunity to talk a little bit about Narcan. And we're looking for some community organization on the west side who could have open hours to have Narcan distribution available for free to the community. Right now, they're in Anaheim, South County, different places. And it's very important, you know, when Ronnie Kelly came, Veronica Kelly, the MHRS chief, she awakened Orange County's eyes to substance use disorder, you know, as she talks freely about her daughter in recovery with a grandchild. So that's one. Make it easy for families to get. So if you have any ideas who may—I was just asked today to look on the west side of this area and also just the beach cities where most of the opiate kids are passing away. The second thing is, I know you're all very proud of your child development program. And today was passed a billion dollars in the MHSA budget for the next three years. In there is a holding budget for zero to five. So there may be some opportunities to either expand your program or to get involved with it. And the other thing is that with all the housing money available at the state, it's really important—I keep looking at Governor Newsom and trying to force housing money down the cities. And if you look at effectiveness versus the ability to implement quickly, mental health is only—is 20, 20% to 25% of the homeless problem. And yet, the language has been hijacked. So I would look to the county to get its more—more of its own fair share, and to look for the community to step up and empower the community. There's 3 million of us to solve the problem. In other counties, the first 100 million into a housing trust was Apple and Cisco, 50 million each so far. I'm aware of Disney giving Five Star Trust. And the first 100 million in came out of direct mental health services, which with the MHSA reorganization will decimate—or really impact negatively prevention, early intervention. So thanks for letting me speak tonight.
Thank you. Hold on a second, Wendy. I need to get your mic back up. Okay, there you go. You have the floor.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Wendy Leese. I appreciate what Steve had to say. Fentanyl is a real issue. Have SOS or other places on the west side have places to have Narcan. That would really be a good idea. I want to kind of go back to 2016, a little bit before that. We had a great grassroots effort. Didn't matter what political persuasion you were, but we all worked together because we love living in Costa Mesa, and we have similar goals to keep it kind of our, you know, a good community safe, as Mr. Mayor mentioned a few minutes ago. We worked together to collect signatures to pass Measure AA, which was to preserve and protect Fairview Park. I appreciate what Kim said about the fly field. You know, you might want to rethink that issue. It could be a gift of public funds for a small group of people who—and then the money that you're going to have to create for a budget to monitor it, to make sure that it's only being used certain times, and then how are you going to be able to enforce any laws, rules, if people come? You know, I was out there on Sunday. What if somebody decides to do a glider on Sunday? It was a bad decision. It's in violation of federal rules regarding protection of vernal pools, and it's not really a good idea. So I'd like you to rethink that. The other thing, I wasn't able to get a slide over to Brenda today, but I hope you will consider supporting a statewide, nonpartisan issue. It's called Our Neighborhood Voices. There are council people who are serving now, former council people like myself, who are supporting this statewide initiative. They're finishing the writing. It'll be ready for signature soon, to restore local planning control. Sacramento with SB 9 and 10 and the Builders' Remedy has taken away your ability to plan for our community. And people are joining this effort because it doesn't matter if you're in Santa Monica or in Los Angeles or Palos Frutti, a small city, Gilroy. It doesn't matter, Republican or Democrat. We are meeting every Wednesday on Zoom from 6:00 to 7:00. Anybody is welcome. It's called Our Neighborhood Voices. Take action to help save your neighborhood. And the website is www.arneborhoodvoices.com.
Thank you. Matt, you have the floor.
Thank you, City Council and Mayor, for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Matt Garcia. I'm the president of HSS. Just wanted to talk—we're approaching the mid-year point of the year—on some of the things HSS has been involved in the first half of the year. In January of this year, HSS was a guest at a local Costa Mesa Girl Scout Brownie troop, where our members talked about aviation and built airplanes with the Brownies. In January and February, HSS supported Corona Del Mar Engineering student Rachel Ward, complete 20 hours of industry engagement as part of one of her senior projects. In March, HSS participated in the Newport Mesa Unified School District, City of Costa Mesa Women in Engineering Event. HSS member Monsi Bakori, professional engineer— Women in Engineering Event. HSS member Monsi Bakori, professional engineer, participated on the panel of all women engineers, and HSS had a table at the event as well. HSS member Monsi Bakori and Ayshu Gunsekhar also participated in the roundtable discussion with the students. In April, at Imaginology 2023, HSS participated in the two-day event for the 14th consecutive year. We built over 1,000 plate gliders with the youth of our community and had over 2,000 interactions with the kids on the HSS flight simulators. In April and May, HSS conducted two courses at the Shalamar Teen Center, Think Together. We will continue this summer with additional courses offered to the students at Think Together. The two courses we taught were additive manufacturing and 3D modeling. In May, HSS members built gliders with the students at Victoria Elementary and had two simulator stations set up for their spring fling event. HSS will be teaching multiple courses with Save Our Youth Teen Center over the summer beginning later this month. We've continued our support of Estancia High School Engineering over the 2022-2023 school year, and have connected two engineering students with paid summer internships for this summer. Finally, HSS members, two HSS members were honored with certificates of recognition last week by Newport Mesa Unified School District for HSS's support of engineering in the district. HSS is proud to help the community of Costa Mesa soar since 1964. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you. I think I have some photos. Yes. I was glad to hear that you have these proclamations and these honoring different groups in the city. And on May 14 through the 20th, it was National Law Enforcement Police Officer Week. And a group of residents got together just on another topic, but wanted to do something to honor the police department. So this group collected money. We bought a banner. They made a sign. We had notes from the children at Victoria Elementary School, and we filled up their squad room with goodies and treats, some of them even healthy. So what I'd like to know is why our city didn't recognize them. And I'm asking you now, next year, to light up City Hall in blue. We had 50, over 50 blue ribbons lining the hall. Costa Mesa is one city that has an excellent rapport with their police department, and we'd like them to know that when there's a holiday like this, that we recognize the officers that were lost, and Costa Mesa has several, that we'd like to know that the officers that go out every day have our support, that we will, in every way we can, get them the best equipment and keep them safe. But we'd like to have the council also acknowledge them, like we acknowledge the sports groups and other things along that line. You have the US flag flying. You have the California bear flag flying. You have the gay flag flying. And I think for one week during this National Police Officers Week, we should have the National Police Officers' flag flying in honor of our police department. I think that's the least we can do. You talked about the violence and the children that are getting killed. They're coming in the contact throughout the nation, and our city as well, in all of this violence, not only gun, but other violence. So I'm going to ask you, and I'll tell you, and you know, if there's one thing, I'm relentless and I'm loud. And I will ask for this many times next year, that you acknowledge our police department. And I want to thank Chief Lawrence for doing a great video on the officers that gave it all for Costa Mesa, and say thank you. Just happens we have a number of officers in the chamber today, and I want to say to all the officers, thank you, Costa Mesa PD rocks, just like our sign said. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, you have the floor.
Hi. Good evening, council. Thank you so much for the time and mayor for this opportunity. I would love to speak in support of the continued preservation of Fairview Park. As a westside resident, this is one of the very few green spaces that our community has. This is really a matter I see as an environmental injustice, right? There are huge ample parks in every other district, Schaefer Park, Lindbergh, there's huge parking lots, empty lots that are available that actually have really great wind. I fly kites there with my family sometimes. There are so many alternatives and options for the soaring society to practice and do their craft. I understand that there's a great angle for engineering and science and steam for our kids, but there's also, let's not forget the science behind conservation, environmental engineering that could be taking place and exposing our kids about conservation and learning about the land and the very unique jewel and opportunity that we have. This is an opportunity for us to have our own Newport Back Bay. It would be such a dream for our community in the future, our future generations, to have a place right here in Costa Mesa that competes with Newport Back Bay. They're able to do it. They're able to still bring a lot of science-focused activities and education for their youth. So there's opportunities beyond just fly and engineering for our kids. So I really would appreciate your support. There's other alternatives to have the soaring society participate in our community. Doesn't have to be Fairview Park, because it's such a unique space. So I encourage you to continue to work towards supporting it. And finally, I know we're always concerned about how other structures in our community are required to pass SEQA and environmental protection. So this right here, bringing the soaring society back in to trample on the nature that lives there, because remember, it's not just what's flying, but things that are burrowing in the ground, amphibians and all sorts of stuff, that really, there's a concern to protect. So I appreciate your support in that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Looks like we're done with the public comment from the folks that are in the chambers. Madam Clerk, do we have anybody waiting on Zoom?
Yes, we do.
Okay, so remember, raise your hand or push star nine, and then when we call you, press star six. So who's up first?
It's phone number ending in number 613.
613, you have the floor.
Yes, hi, Chris McAvoy, Costa Mesa. I want to make a comment about the new permit parking program that's going to be implemented in the next two months here. And I want to highlight some issues that weren't brought up in any of the Zoom meetings that I attended. First thing I want to talk about is there's been an absolute no effort to address existing parking problems on the original non-permitted streets. So much so that the consultant, I would actually call her a contractor, made the comment that, well, it might create a couple extra spaces. That's not acceptable when we're talking about parking issues. The next thing I'd like to address is that there are many unused parking spaces at the apartments. And these two issues are problems for people that don't live on our street, but now they're going to have to be our problem. Whereas this was a council that was good at leadership, they would try to fix those problems before they put problems on other residents. There's also the issue where these apartment complexes under this new permit parking program are going to be no longer required to have onsite parking, because they can tell every tenant that you can qualify for up to four permits. For what benefit, why would they even consider keeping their onsite parking and consider that becoming more apartments or rented out storage units? I filed a FOIA request with regards to the city's fact claim that there was a significant amount of residential concerns when the permit program was stopped. And there were residential concerns. And according to my FOIA request, the concerns were, when is it going to be reinstated? I just moved to a permitted street. I need to renew my permit. None of those concerns validate the need for the new permit parking program. I also want to talk about how misleading this whole thing is. Do you know how hard it is to get truthful information about what this program is? If you ask the contractor, not the consultant, during the Phase One meeting to answer the question and stop using the word solid, she hangs up on you and won't answer the straightforward question, are other streets allowed to park on their streets? If the council member Reynolds is asked by a resident, is it true that people can park on your street that don't live on the street? She will not give a straightforward answer. If you email the company, it takes about a dozen emails to get an answer to that question. My neighbors are under the impression that this new permit program will be like the old one. And when they pay for something that's not what they thought they were getting, because they can't get a straightforward answer, that's kind of fraudulent to me. But you guys have to hide behind these responses that are clear and honest.
So, excuse me, your three minutes are up, Mr. McAvoy.
The next speaker is Hank Castanetti.
Mr. Castanetti, you have the floor.
Good evening, council, staff, and the great citizens of Costa Mesa. As you can hear, I'm rather hoarse. I apologize for that. I'll keep my comments short. Many of you know me as the voice of the Orange County Model Engineers. We operate the Miracle Flats at Gilde Hill Junction Railroad and beautiful Fairview Nature Park. Tonight, I would just like to make a comment about the railroad. Last month, we gave 3,342 free rides, and we are on track to break all records, all club records for free rides this year. Tonight, my main focus is to speak to the life and legend of a Costa Mesa resident and environmental icon, Richard Dick Maron, Dr. Dick Maron. As many of you know, he passed away last month. And I would just want to remind everyone that his funeral services will be held on June 16 at St. Simon and Jude Church in Honeycomb Beach on Magnolia at 11 o'clock, followed at noon by a celebration of life at the Norma Herzog Community Center. And his family would like everyone who knew him and would like to participate, please come by. The Herzog Center will provide a lunch and libations and an open mic for anybody who has anything to say about the amazing life of Dr. Maron. As some of you also know, Dick was a major proponent of protecting the nature aspects of Fairview Park. Without him, it probably would have been paved over. His efforts were monumental, and his community activism was unmatched. So again, please come by the church on the 16th at 11:00, Norma Herzog on the 16th at 12:00, and help memorialize. The Orange County Model Engineers have commissioned a brass plaque will mount at Maron Water Tower on the water. His family extremely proud of the fact that their family name is immortalized on the water tower. And I also do point out that we are honored that Dick was a big supporter of the trains at Fairview Park. Once again, thank you very much. And if anybody out there listening or watching would like to come and join us and play trains, please go to orangeocmetrains.org, and we'll show you how you can become a member and play trains with us.
All right. Thanks.
Very much.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Cynthia McDonald.
Ms. McDonald, you have the floor.
Cynthia, we still can't hear you.
Madam Clerk, let's go back to her. Is there anybody else waiting?
That is our last speaker, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Let's give her some, a little bit of time to...
Well, can you hear me now? Can you hear me now?
Now he can hear you.
Okay. Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council members. Cynthia McDonald, Costa Mesa resident. I hope you got a lot out of the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance study session. I'd like to know when the next study session will be. Please don't hold it in the same room. The acoustics weren't good, and the microphones didn't help. It is even difficult to hear the speakers on the recording, so perhaps the community center would be a better location. One of the city council members wants to drag his feet on an IHO, using the excuse that we have to get this right. Well, we do have to get this right, but this is the same person who rushed Measure K to the ballot with the reasoning that perfection is the enemy of progress. So which is it? As you know, our housing element is still out of compliance and won't be in compliance until required rezoning is completed. Also, as stated in the HCD letter, programs must be adopted and implemented, including an IHO that must be done by December 23. Many of the programs have a one-year deadline because the city failed to timely file a compliant housing element, and we lost the two-year extension given to those cities who did. This means that we could be perpetually subject to the builder's remedy. It also means that we could lose out on funding programs for transportation, infrastructure, and housing, because some of the state and federal programs require a compliant housing element. Our chances have decreased for getting grants where bonus points are given to applicants with compliant housing elements. It won't be long before we feel the consequences of that failure to timely file. What is clear is that the trickle-down housing theory, which erroneously hypothesizes that building more luxury and market rate housing will lower the cost of housing, isn't working. In fact, this type of gentrification only makes existing housing more expensive. It is important that the city council move forward on an IHO so affordable units will be built. The way we can judge whether a city's housing policies are working is by looking at the annual progress report it files with the state. Costa Mesa hasn't filed a report for the last two periods. I'd like to know when those are going to be filed. Now, switching gears, I don't know if you have heard this already, but this weekend Frank Randall passed away. He was a great champion of local environmental causes and was the primary reason Banning Ranch is being preserved and protected for many generations of Costa Masons to enjoy. We were fortunate to receive the benefits of his largesse, and he won't be forgotten. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're done?
Yes.
Okay. We'll close public comments, and now we'll do council member committee reports, comments, and suggestions. First up from District Two is Councilmember Lauren Gamaros.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of comments about some of the items that came up in the public address. One of them is our parks. You know, I don't like seeing our parks get closed off. So just in response to what I'm hearing, I will personally look into why we're closing parks off. I would like to see all the parks be open. I know that some of the open green spaces we have are dedicated to specific use for sports. I don't want to see any kind of exclusion take place. I've actually been working really hard to see Luke Davis Field get open so that we can use it again in the community. We do have a field use allocation policy that dictates when, how, and why the field gets used for specific sports. And we're going to take a look at the FOOP, the Field Use Allocation Policy here, hopefully sooner than later, to make any appropriate changes that need to be done. As far as adding fences to parks, I would be happy to partner with my colleague in that district and see if we can address why that's taking place and make any corrections that need to be made. But we are a city of the arts, and I do believe that recreation is important and goes hand in hand with arts. So if we're going to prevent our city from recreating, we're also going to prevent our city from having arts. So I do think they go hand in hand, and I will address that. That's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. Now, we're going to go right next door to District One for Councilmember Donald Harper.
Thank you, Mayor Stevens. I hope Lieutenant Watkins sent me an email regarding the flock camera system. I hope he doesn't mind me sharing kind of an update on how that's doing. It's really, to me, it's kind of exciting. I'm a CPA by trade, and it's a great return, it looks like a great return on investment. To date, on an investment of $38,000... To date, on an investment of $38,000, and there's only 16 cameras installed right now. They've made 28 arrests and recovered 24 stolen vehicles. And the 24 stolen vehicles would value of about $360,000. So for $38,000, we got $360,000 back. They've used the system to also make arrests on other commercial burglary, grand theft, sexual assault, and a hit-and-run. So it's working, and they've got another 16 to install citywide. And the other thing that they've done that's really great, they've gotten South Coast Plaza to install 27 cameras, and that'll be integrated into their system. I think it's really a great, cost-effective thing. This was, the flock camera systems were a couple of my neighbors who came up with the concept, researched it, got all of us guys in our street to pitch in, and we bought one. And then I harassed poor Chief Lawrence into doing something, and tenaciously got something done in a really, really short timeframe. I really appreciate it. So I look forward to like a 90-day update. Maybe you can speak to it, or Lieutenant Watkins can come and speak. I don't mean to steal your thunder. I'm just very, very happy and appreciate a return on investment like that. And we should all think about council and the community. You know, that idea came from the community and think about things to help our law enforcement. And we can all maybe one day come up with a good idea. I did, I'm going to talk about the Costa Mesa Tennis Center. And because it's taken so long, I've gotten a lot of comments during the process. I think it's for 18 or 19 months since Hank Lloyd left the tennis center. I keep asking for an update. And so maybe out of frustration, or maybe curious what's going on, I ask for the detailed proposals. And our city attorney gave me a letter saying, hey, for these reasons, you shouldn't receive those. But that was the reason I asked, and I just want to publicly say that. I don't have a horse in the race or a dog in the fight. I don't, I just want a fair process, and I want us to get resolved as to what we're doing long-term on that, the Mesa Tennis Center, and be fair to the people that are interested in it. I do think that the reasons that I received for not getting it had to do with me getting it before any of the council members and confidential information. And those are the two primary reasons. So I would like to ask that when it is released, I would like a lot of detail. And to solve part of the problem, you can release it to all the council members at the same time, and then redact any confidential information. And I'd really like to see the details of the proposals. I want to understand why this took so long, frankly. And that's what I'm after, to be totally honest about it. So that's all I have this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. Now, we're going to go to District Three. Councilmember Andrea Marr in Arlington, Virginia? Is that right?
Nothing for me tonight, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. So now, we're going to go to District Five, Councilmember Arliss Reynolds.
Great, thank you. A few items tonight. I wanted to comment on the discussions related to park access. Access to parks, park equity, access to parks for open play as opposed to, or in addition to, I should say, organized sports has been a priority of mine and of our council for years. These are discussions that we started before COVID. Of course, through COVID, we had to deal with some of the hard decisions about restricting some access. But there is a lot of good work and a lot of good conversations around how do we increase access to, free access to our recreational facilities and parks in this city? I know it wasn't always the case, but we do have support from our Newport Mesa School District Trustees and this council on this issue. You heard Councilmember Gamaros mention this as well. And I know that our city managers were working directly with our superintendent on some of these issues. So just wanted to express my support for the work that our city manager is leading. Thank you for getting involved in these discussions, Loriann. And really want to make sure that we sort of stay focused on the course we're on, that we started several years ago around the equity issues related to park access in our community. I think I'll talk more about this item next time when we have some videos and follow-up photos. But I do have to say some thank yous for our Costa Mesa Walk and Roll Festival that we had over Memorial Weekend. It was a really, a couple of weeks before the event, we were pretty stressed out if anyone was going to show up. And a few days before the event, we had to shut down registration because more than 500 people had registered for the event. This was a festival really put together by a collaboration of many, many, many different people, held at Estancia High School. And I just want to shout out some thank yous. So the city was a great sponsor, supported our DJ, and over 330 burgers out into the community. Newport Mesa was a great partner, providing Estancia, the Estancia facility. Costa Mesa Police Department was there, and really thank you for the cooperation in what we're pretty sure was the first-ever e-bike training course in Orange County. I think we talked to every city in the area. We talked to OCTA. No one had done that before, and so it was pretty cool to be the first on an issue that's a huge need, right? Training on riding safely. So thank you to the police department. The Police Association also donated two bikes and some gift certificates for the raffle. So huge thank you to the association as well. And the Fire Association sent six members to help with helmet fittings. We gave away more than 200 bicycle helmets to people who attended the event, which was really special to see, and it was really neat to see our firefighters out there fitting helmets on children and adults in our community. The business community came out. Electric Bike Company was there. The cyclists donated gift certificates, Super 73 loaned e-bikes for people to practice on the course. And of course, our community volunteers from the Active Transportation Committee, Costa Mesa Alliance for Better Streets, Newport Mesa Rotary. I'm sure I'm forgetting a few. Our partners from the Promotoras were there as well, providing community resources. So it was really, really, really a fantastic event. And I'll share some video that we're working on next time. And want to share in advance that I, you know, I want to see more of this. I think the community wants to see more of this, so I'm excited about. And Rajah Setharaman, Director of Public Works, is there. Thank you for coming. It was really, really a fantastic event that I'm excited to have more of. On the topic of rental assistance, I am concerned about some of the continued feedback that we're getting about our programs not being accessible or being hard to connect with our providers. I heard that someone got a response that we're out of money, which I don't know if that's the case or not. So I really want to follow up on that and make sure that we have, you know, very low barriers to accessing these funds that, you know, we've made available for our community. And I want to make sure that they're available to the folks who need it most. One quick note, as we've been going through the budget and talking about goals, I've been thinking a lot about our city mission statement and core values that we've developed over the last couple of years. And it occurred to me that I don't know if those are posted anywhere. And so I thought it'd be a really good idea to have it posted here as a reminder for us. If it's posted in City Hall for the employees, that's fantastic. I'd love to make sure it's posted somewhere so that our residents see it as well. So if it is posted and I haven't noticed it, let me know. Otherwise, it'd be great to see that. I think we're all very proud, especially of the core values. So it'd be great to see those posted in a prominent location. And I wanted to add, just as a last item, sort of my note on Frank Randall. Ms. McDonald mentioned Frank Randall. He was a, you know, not a Costa Mesa resident, but beloved by many Costa Mesa residents for his $50 million donation towards the purchase of Banning Ranch, which is 400 acres now owned for public access and preserve that will be accessible to Costa Mesa residents. And many Costa Mesa residents were in, if not leading, the fight to protect Banning Ranch. So thank you to Frank Randall. I know many people are heartbroken by his passing. And I'll ask the mayor to, if we can end the meeting in his honor. Thank you.
Yeah, will do, for sure. Okay, now we've got from District Four, Honorable Councilmember Manuel Chavez.
Thank you, Mayor Stevens. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. It's always nice seeing the public after a three-week break. First of all, I want to congratulate all of our Costa Mesa High School, Estancia High School, Tupper Harbor High School, and early college high school seniors as y'all graduated either this past week or this Thursday. Very proud of your work. Very proud to see you represent our great city as you move on to the next part of your life. Quick comments on a couple of things mentioned during public comment. First, I definitely agree with the need and desire to promote our PD. I've had a great pleasure of working with our police department in my district in particular, and trying to connect more of the PD with the community these past few months. And we've seen a great abundance of benefit from that. We have number one watch down in Chalamar now. We have the community calling the police more often. And I think we're doing a good job, or trying to do a good job of combining the community with our police department apparatus. I want to see us doing more, though. I know in the past, I mentioned the idea of perhaps doing an event at Ketchum Level Park in my district, District Four, as it is honoring two officers that passed away during their, during service to our community. I think it'd be a great way for us to incorporate community outreach while honoring the police in a very sensitive place. So I know we missed this year's unfortunate for Police Officer Week, but maybe next year we can put in the books and do a community coffee or something, anything. Because I know in my district, people are happy with the police work, and they feel safer when they come by, and I think we should continue that process for them. Secondly, a lot of talk about open space, and I like hearing those conversations. We, I know staff is talking with the district about reopening some fields that have been historically closed, predominantly in West Side Costa Mesa. We were waiting for the district to complete their facilities' master plan, and it seems like that's coming to fruition. So I anticipate with the next few meetings, we'll have a discussion about opening up those fields that have been closed off for the community. Furthermore, Luke Davis Field is going to have a reopening event on June 17th. Another something that myself, Councilmember Reynolds, and Councilmember Gamaros have been pushing for heavily. But it's important that we are using these green spaces as they are in the city. There's no need to reinvent something that's already there. So I think creating access is important. And furthermore, just for the community that spoke out in concern of Fairview Park, I understand the concerns. I truly do. But let's not forget the bigger vision we have when it comes to our west coast or west-side river chill system, right? We've recreated, this is past year, the funding for a private bike lane down Placentia that will connect all the kids in West Side Costa Mesa, not only to Fairview Park, but to future rental Preserve Park. We're doing our best to promote bikability and walkability so folks can bike to the channel safer. We are doing these things in the background, and sometimes it's our fault for not saying it publicly. But the truth is, we do understand the need for open space. We're doing all we can intentionally to create more open space. And that's why in my district, we voted in later today, we're going to codify banning two pocket parks in a lower, in a community that don't have a lot of open spaces. So just know that while we may not always be saying it formally, money talks, and our budget speaks of that commitment. Speaking of commitments to safety, I also wanted to acknowledge two areas that have mentioned high speeding. So Meyer Street, as you know, in my district, next to the DMV, installed roundabouts about two years ago in an effort to curtail speeding. A lot of those roundabouts are now a little bit deteriorated, and I think the community asked me if they're going to be taken down or if they're going to be enhanced. So at some point, if we can, you know, either make those permanent or remove them, we should do that because it's getting to the point of the lifespan where they're looking a little funky. And then secondly, in regards to speeding on Placentia and South Coast Drive, I keep getting residents reach out to me saying there's a lot of speeding on those two streets. I mentioned in the past a desire to have street medians there because they're a natural way to curtail speeding. So anything we can do to pursue grants in those efforts will be highly, highly encouraged, especially because, again, we are planning to put a bike path on Placentia. So those are my, those are my comments. I appreciate everyone being here today, and I hope you enjoy the meeting. Thank you.
From District Six, the wise one, Mayor Pro Tem Jeff Harlan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to try and be as quick as I can. I see some of my youngest constituents here getting a little antsy. Parents are running out of tricks and bribes. So I want to reiterate, Councilmember Chavez, congratulations to our graduating high school seniors. It's quite an accomplishment, and likewise, it's a great relief for parents. So hopefully by next week, everybody can take a deep breath and start their summers. Want to report on this past weekend's event and thank city staff, as well as Costa Mesa United, for hosting the, what was formerly the Pilot Cup. Now it's called the Newport Mesa Soccer Classic. Yes, so Councilmember Gamaros, Mayor Stevens, and I were out there on Sunday. We had the pleasure of handing out some medals and trophies to winning teams, which is great. But, you know, the real joy of that event is that it's elementary school kids, public and private schools, just representing their schools and having fun. That's really the focus of it, and it's great to see that happen on our city parks. Lastly, speaking of parks, Harper Park, I just want to respond very directly to Ms. Tanaka's comments. I agree 100%. This is not the finest moment for the city or for the district. As my kids would say, Dad, this is an epic fail. It's a failure of communication, failure of implementation, and a failure of accountability. And I know that we, as a city, can do better. We can work with our partner, the district. I'm assured by our city manager, as Councilmember Reynolds had mentioned, is working with our superintendent to get this done. It can be corrected, and I'm expecting that to be done quickly. That's all tonight.
All right, good. Okay, so I've got a lot of things to say, but most of them are very brief. So the fidgeting continues. Anyhow, so Les Miller Awards were great. Councilmember Reynolds and I were there. And thank you to the chamber for putting that on. It honors the students that have incredible achievement from our high schools, and we gave out certificates, and so we participated in that. Thank you very much, the chamber. As Mayor Pro Tem Harlan said, he and Lauren Gamaros and I were, Councilmember Gamaros and I were at the Newport Mesa Cup. A couple of things about the Newport Mesa Cup. There are now 185 teams that participate in it, and that's just third and fourth grade and fifth and sixth, fifth and sixth grade teams. And Director Seth Araman, they were very pleased with the improvements that we've done at Jack Hammitt. So thank you to the council, and thank you to the Public Works Department for the great job you did there. It's showing benefits. The day before that, I was at the Little League Closing Day. It's pretty amazing. It's the biggest, it's the largest that the league has ever, has ever been. Thank you to the police and the fire department who sent representatives to join me there. It was, they have over 600 kids playing, six major teams, and we're now the largest league in District 62. It wasn't always like that. We had a wonderful, well, I don't know, wonderful. It was, it was a good experience. But, you know, we remember Memorial Day. On Memorial Day, our deputy city manager and our city manager were there. Our PD gave, we took a trip down Harbor Boulevard escorted by the PD. Thank you very much, and the Noble Cause Society for bringing their Jeeps. And it was wonderful to see the fire department honor guard participate in that. So thank you to everybody who participated. So this is the, I don't know if you all know this, but this is the summer of the 70th. You know about the summer of the 70th? Yeah, so it's 70 years since we've been a city. We were incorporated in 1953. And so there's a lot of stuff that's happening, some of which tied to the 70th and some not. One of the ones that I participated in for years, and it's not a city event, but it's the Baker Street Bash. It's this weekend, the 9th, 10th, and the 11th, at St. John the Baptist Parish. And it's on Baker Street, as the name implies, and it's a lot of fun. There's a lot of great entertainment, food, and games and stuff to play, carnival rides. Also, the Lions Club is doing the Fish Fry. Thank you to our Parks and Rec Department, who worked so hard on that, and our police department. That's the, it's going to be at a new footprint that we've approved at Lions Park on the 23rd, 24th, and 25th. And then not to be outdone, the city of Costa Mesa is holding our Something Annual Manny Chavez Day Event. It's July 3rd, Manuel Chavez's birthday. And so we're celebrating Independence Day. We're going to have the Tijuana Dogs and an 80s band. We're going to give out over 1,500 frisbees. The Fire Association is giving out hot dogs as usual, and thank you to them. And we're going to have food and all kinds of great stuff to drink. On Harper Park, I agree, we need to take down the fence. That's about as far as I'm going to go with it. I've got my reasons, but I'm kind of trying to boogie through these, this list here. I've got my reasons, but I'm kind of trying to boogie through this list here. I'm interested in what's happening with the South Coast Drive block wall. We don't need to talk about it now necessarily, or in the city manager's report, but please, if I could get a briefing on that, I'd appreciate it. And in that same area, I want to tell a little story, and then I want to turn it over to the police chief. So, over at Wacon Park, I've got some good friends, and, you know, every once in a while, I get, I'm a recipient of a lot of comments from people when things aren't going so right, and they need me to help them address the issue. And that's fine, and I welcome that. But every once in a while, you get a really good compliment. So, my friends live right over by, on Tulare, right over by, or Turlock, right over by Wacon Park. And there was a white car on their street, and the police and fire responded, and there was an overdose, as it turns out. Somebody sadly overdosed in their car. And so, the police and fire responded, and I think probably fire brought the guy back to life using Narcan. So, a shout out for Narcan. As I said in my last comments, we need to get Narcan every place we can get it. So, not only did they save a life, but the police officers in particular turned to the neighbors, who are very concerned that all this activity was happening in their neighborhood, and explained everything to the neighbors, provided a card, and said, if you have any questions, just let us know. And to me, it was like, not only great police work, great firework, but also great customer service and great ambassadors for the city. So, I want to thank the police department and the fire department for the work they do. And this type of thing, by the way, make no mistake about it, happens every day on every shift for every cop and every firefighter. It's just, I got this one call, and I want to share it with all of you, okay? And with that, I'd like to call up the, it's been a wonderful week for the police department. I want to call up the police chief to talk about some of the promotions that have occurred in the department.
I just want to say thank you for that story and that comment. And my police department knows, and I'll tell you from the bottom of my heart, they know how supportive the city council is and our city manager. That's why I work here, because we have a city government, a city council, and a police department that truly care. And that story just warms my heart. I'm excited. This is a lot of exciting things at Costa Mesa Police Department, and being able to promote people into positions of leadership is very exciting. Two of the most important decisions that I make as a police chief are who I hire, hiring good people with good servant hearts that are empathetic and caring, compassionate to serve this great community. And then, the second most important decision I can make are the leaders I promote to help me run the organization. So, as I call their name, I'd like to have them stand up because this is one of the largest promotional groups we've had in recent history. And it comes on the heels of already this year, we've promoted four, including our police deputy chief, Joyce La Pointe, who cannot be here because she's at a class called Becoming a Police Chief. So, succession's planning is alive and well, but she's watching remotely. So, I told her I'd make sure to give her a shout out. But this week, we're announcing the promotion of six new promoters. So, in addition to the four we've already promoted, that's 10 this calendar year. So, starting with Lieutenant Brian Watkins, we're promoting Captain. Captain Jason Chamnus. Lieutenant Carlos Diaz. Lieutenant Michelle Bradbury. Sergeant Jake Jacoby. And Sergeant Nick Wilson. They all have bachelor's degrees. Two of them are working on master's degrees. The captains have attended Executive Leadership Institute, which is a very intense leadership course, and I'm just so proud to have them on the executive team with me. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Thank you to all the, congratulations to all the promoters, and really, the department is strong, but the future's never been brighter. So, thank you very much. Now, we're going to go to city manager Loriann Farrell Harrison for the city manager's report.
Good evening, mayor and council, and members of the public. Thank you so much. Just had a few things to update you all on. I will start with a shameless plug for individuals to please apply to our Parks and Community Services Department. So, as you know, our Parks and Community Services Department makes life better, and so we are really trying to increase our staffing and get young, vibrant people to help us this summer with all of our recreational programs. We have increased the hourly rate for our employees in Parks and Community Services to $20 an hour and up, up to $23 an hour. And so, if you have teenagers, college students at home, friends, loved ones, please encourage them to participate in the fair that we're going to have here at Costa Mesa City Hall on Saturday, this Saturday, June 10th, from 9:00 a.m. to noon. Have them bring their resume, their excitement. We really need some just young people to replenish our ranks and bring ourselves back up to full staffing. Just wanted to thank the city council, too, for their leadership in terms of increasing the salary so we can get the best and brightest to work for us here in Costa Mesa. A couple of other key issues that have been raised tonight on the floor, I just wanted to reiterate how we are going to have the, on June 17th, the Luke Davis Field opening celebration and opening the gates to the community to make it more accessible to the community. This is a council priority, and we're thrilled to provide this additional open space for all of the residents of West Side Costa Mesa. So, please join us from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. on the 17th. Very excited for that. And so, just a point of clarification, Luke Davis Field is our field. It is a city field. It is not a school field. It's a city field, and so we have the full authority to move forward with those kinds of changes, which leads me to just some of the comments that we heard tonight on a separate issue, which is Harper Park. I am working with the mayor and with Mayor Pro Tem Harland on that issue, but also with Wes Smith, the superintendent of schools. So, different from Luke Davis, the Harper Park footprint, if you will, this is a school district property, and so that's a collaborative effort between us and the school district. I've heard some comments tonight about us taking down the fence. We didn't put up the fence, and it's not our offense to take down. However, they're open to that conversation and those deliberations, which I will engage in. And also, for the sake of transparency, and also for the sake of accuracy, as we have these conversations moving forward, just want to make it clear that that was a school district decision. We neither approved, endorsed, encouraged, blessed, none of those things. It was a heads up. We received that information. They make a lot of decisions for their facilities, and they're open to having the conversation on this, but it's not, we did not put up the fence. We'll work with them to make sure that the residents still have access in a way that makes sense for them, and we're happy to have that conversation. In terms of events coming up that we love, the Fish Fry is back and better than ever at Lions Park with a new date of June 23rd through 25th. And so, we're really hoping that everyone will come and enjoy the expanded footprint this year to make more room for rides and families to have a great time, thanks to Jason Minter and his park staff. We look forward to seeing you there. We agree with, we received a comment about the next meeting on the Housing Inclusionary Ordinance. That will happen at the July study session, and so we will be bringing that item back. We'll have full information from our consultant, Kathy Head, and we can have that deliberation. We're still working as staff for the best venue, mayor. We'll talk to you about that in terms of making sure that we have good technology, if you will. And then, thank you, Councilmember Reynolds, on your comments regarding core values. We'll make sure to get that up. That's a great idea. And then, regarding our efforts to improve, enhance, and be more responsive for families needing rental assistance, I'm going to turn it over to Al Marías, just to give a brief recap of what we've done so far and all of the different events that we've held.
Thank you. I'd be happy to report out on what our constituent services team has engaged in. Just to give you a brief summary of the various resource fairs, workshops, meetings that the team has either participated in or has actually held. Early on in this year, we actually held two community resource fairs, one at the Lions Park lawn, and we also held one at the Senior Center. As of recent, in the last couple of months, we've also participated in partnership with the Promotoras and OC Resilience in two community resource fairs, one at Chalamar Neighborhood and the other one at the Fillmore Neighborhood. In addition to that, we have also held two fair housing workshops, one at the Senior Center and also one here at City Hall. And just this week, we also held, or I'm sorry, late last week, we held a Public Law Center workshop at City Hall in the community room. Our team continues to make contacts with our residents and continues to share information, print flyers. We have a really good relationship with some of our community leaders that have spoken this evening, and we'll continue to do that and work with our team internally in getting that information out. Also, I want to add that our team actually goes out there and canvases the neighborhoods. So, it's not just mailing, posting, you know, website information, but it's actually contacts that we have. And we also utilize other venues, such as our pop-ups that we're engaging the community in right now for these parks projects. We also bring in additional forms that the community is able to fill out for any additional concerns or issues that they're facing, and our team is being responsive to those as well. Just as of recent, we've partnered with Project Food Box, so we will be sending out a mailer to all of our residents, especially those in our heart-to-reach census tracts, about this amazing program where they offer free food box services for those families that are eligible. So, we will be sending that out and promoting it through all of our social media platforms and website. Thank you. I'm available to answer any questions if anyone has any.
Okay, no questions? Are we good? Everybody's good? All right, now. City Attorney Report. City Attorney.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was just going to say, I just wanted to say congratulations to all the officers in the police department who have received promotions. I'm very excited and pleased for you and look forward to working with all of you some more. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you very much, Madam City Attorney. So, now we're going to move on to the consent calendar. All items in the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be acted upon in one vote unless the item is pulled by either members of the public, staff, or the council. Madam Clerk, has anyone pulled any of the consent calendar items?
Mr. Mayor, I've had no requests.
Good. Okay, then I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Councilmember Chavez, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Harland. Let's call for the question.
It'll be roll call vote.
Voice roll call.
Yes, Councilmember Reynolds, Councilmember Chavez,
Yes.
Councilmember Harper,
Yes.
Councilmember Gamaros,
Yes.
Councilmember Marr.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Harland.
Yes.
Mayor Stevens.
Well, before I vote, though, to make this official, I want to just note belatedly, Councilmember Gamaros's recusal from consent calendar item number three. With that, yes.
Motion carries 7-0.
Okay, what do we have first? Hold on a second. The BIA, let's see, it's 8:02. Let's take a 10-minute break. Let's be back at 8:10, sorry, 8:12, and we'll start our stuff, and we'll get through it. No more breaks. No more breaks.[240.95]
In our internal service fund, our equipment replacement fund totals $5.8 million. This includes the replacement of two fire pumpers, one utilizing about $900,000 and change of CDBG funds. We're replacing aging public works fleets that are needed to maintain our city streets, and we're also including a replacement of 16 police vehicles for $1 million. In our IT replacement and self-insurance funds, in our IT replacement fund, fully funds year four of IT strategic plan, which includes the addition of a cybersecurity analyst, $300,000 to the finance ERP purchasing module, $1.5 million for year one essentially seed money of our CAD RMS public safety system, $250,000 for document imaging database system. In our self-insurance internal service fund, we've increased our funding by $250,000 due to ongoing administrative cost increases. Our capital improvement budget of $31.1 million comprises mostly of parks of $15.3 million of the multiple men, Foley, and Petri Norris funds are included here, facilities of about $3.8 million, transportation of $5.6, streets of $5.9, and parkways and medians of about And achieving our strategic planning goals. In our improving quality of life, the $31.1 million in the CIP includes the expansion of Ketchum Lightbulb, Shalimar, and the Skate Park, the Lions Park Cafe, and Fairview Park, just to name a few. Our capital improvement fund now includes a transfer out of the $384,000 from our capital fund into the Park Land Acquisition Fund for the West Side part of the city for parks. Our gas tax fund includes the increase of our street sweeping contract of $720,000. In our category of advancing environmental sustainability and climate resiliency, we're funding the planning and sustainable development manager that was approved at mid-year, a management analyst supported by additional revenues generated by SB 1383, active transportation for $4.1 million in the CIP that includes Safe Route to Schools, T-Winkle Park Lakes Repair, $150,000 for tree planting and maintenance, initiates our Climate Action Adaptation Plan and LED lights at Jack Hammett and T-Winkle. Further, on January 1st, 2022, AB 481 required all California law enforcement agencies to write an equipment policy, compile an investment report, make them public, and have them approved by our city council. For the City of Costa Mesa, annual AB 481 report was posted on the Costa Mesa Police Department website on May 5th to ensure compliance with AB 481. Every year, the city prepares and adopts fees for special events that need assistance from our city personnel. Before you tonight are the fees that we are recommending for the fiscal year 2324 special event rates. For our general fund budget, we are proud to announce a structurally balanced budget without using ARPA or our reserves. We're maximizing our city's economic recovery through strategic investments in our infrastructure. We're fully funding the capital fund and the IT strategic plan. We've continued to correct the previous year's deficits in equipment replacement fund, and we've included the additional $1 million in debt payments for the reconstruction of fire stations two and four and our police West Side substation. In our general fund overview, these are the numbers, as you can see here, between our fiscal year 2324 proposed and our 2223 adopted budget, which is approximately $16.7 million increase or 10%. In this chart, we're showing you our amended budget, so you can see it's approximately a 3% increase in our revenue, which is a conservative, with a 5.6% increase on our expenditures. As you can also see, our revenues are outpacing our adopted budget. We are estimating at this time a surplus of $4 million. In our chart for your proposed general fund revenues, I can, you can see that our largest sale, slice of the chart is a sales tax of 46% of our total, followed by our property tax of 30%. On our expenditure side, you can see over 52% of our general fund is dedicated to our police and fire. We have made some adjustments since our May 9 proposed budget study session. Aside from the recommended full-time new positions in our IT, finance, and public works departments, we are also requesting an additional animal services supervisor in our police department to oversee the new animal services program as a result of consolidating our animal care services and animal control program into our police department. For our time, part-time conversions to full-time, we're also making an additional request to increase .25 of a management aid into our housing authority fund to support our increasing homeless outreach services. Every year, we are required by state law to provide you with the appropriations otherwise known as GAN limit calculation, and before you tonight is the approval of our 2324 appropriation GAN limit. Won't go into detail here, but you can see all of the formulas that are required by state law that local governments must present to their governing boards to ensure compliance. Our established 2324 appropriations limit is $298.4 million, which is $142 million above the estimate, so we're all within our means. In our category of achieving long-term fiscal sustainability, as you can see here, we are at this moment in time estimating an additional $4 million into our general fund. We are recommending $1 million going into our workers' compensation category, our SIR per claim is $2 million. Essentially, we're responsible for each claim up to $2 million, and then our, our policy will pick up the balances after that. We're also requesting to continue the policy to deposit 1.5 million into our Section 115 trust, and then the other balance of 1.5 million, if available, into unassigned categories at this moment. We are looking forward into our 2223 current year budget of the $4 million, $4 million year-end savings. As mentioned already, the 1.5 Section 115 trust, $1 million workers' compensation, and we're also, requests will be coming forth to transfer $700,000 to $3 million to our housing authority for the visioning and resoning work for our housing element program implementation. And we're also requesting to cover a prior year shortfall in our arts and culture master plan of $282,000. These requests will be forthcoming in our next city council open session. For our budget calendar, as you can see here, we started discussing the proposed budget in April 11th with the city council on our proposed CIP. We've made our presentations to the Five PAC, our Finance and Pension Advisory Committee, our Parks and Community Services Commission, our Planning Commission. We were before you for our study session, and before you tonight is the proposed adoption of our public hearing. With that, I will open it up to questions.
Questions by council? Anybody who wants to go first? Yeah, Councilmember Gamaros.
First of all, thank you for that presentation. That was a lot of pages, but you managed to whisk your way through it. I want to refer back to a May 9 council study session in which we originally brought this up, and we went over all these proposed operating capital improvement budget items. I had, I had asked a question last time, and it was actually referred to Rajah, so maybe you might be the one to answer this. In the T-Winkle Sports Complex, I had some questions regarding how we were allocating the funds, and if we are going to appropriate some of them towards batting cages. We had some drainage issues, some nets. There was multiple things, and they're not specified in here, so I just would wonder if maybe you could comment on that and give some elaboration, please.
Yes, Councilmember Gamaros, yeah, for the T-Winkle Park Athletic Complex, in addition to the LED lighting, which was the main focus of Senator Menz's appropriation of the grant funds, we have also included the drainage monies for drainage improvements and also for batting cage.
It's not spelled out in either one of these?
It's in the, it's in the details of the, of the document, so let me, if I can find it, let you know.
Is that the one in my binder that I missed?
So, in the CIP, we have detailed project worksheets for each project. So if you look at the T-Winkle Athletic Complex improvements, it talks about-
What page, what page are you on?
It's project number 22 under the binder for the whole CIA, it's the budget, budget book.
The big, the big budget binder.
Okay, thank you. It's in there, okay. I'm gonna take your word for it.
Yeah, it's project number 22, so if you want to look-
Fine, thank you. I take your word. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I had one question, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
It's for city manager. So, obviously, we're in anticipation at some point in the next fiscal year to work in agreement with the school district to open up some fields in West Costa Mesa. Do we have staff positions already baked into this budget for any parking duty we may
Thank you, Councilmember Chavez. We don't have specific recommendations. There is a, there is one of the actions that you would take tonight. I think it's item number six that speaks about generally giving me the authority to work with staff and with the school district on what the staffing plan would be. And so that conversation has been going on, but it wasn't in time to put something into the budget on May 9th. But since we're working on that and still finalizing it, with that action, you'd be giving me the authority to develop the staffing plan, make sure that the facilities are secure but still open to the public, because it will likely exceed my authority, and only you can authorize additional positions. So if you feel comfortable with that language, then I can continue to make headway on this while we bring you a formal recommendation in the future on, you know, the specifics of it.
Well, I was looking for just the fact that we're preparing for it, and it sounds like we are. So I'll take that as a sign of good faith that we're gonna move forward with that. So thank you much for doing that work, the background.
All right. Yes, Councilmember Reynolds.
Great, thank you. And I thank you to staff for the great presentation and work leading up to today. I think I've been able to narrow down my comments to just three, if you believe me, and we'll see if I can follow through on that. And I'm especially thankful to our city manager for working through a lot of my questions with me ahead of this. So one of them is related to the energy and sustainability manager position. This is something that we had discussed at the previous study session, and I think was a staff recommendation at that point to move that position into the city manager department, reporting directly to the city manager. My understanding is that was the intent, and that can be, can be done?
Yes, that can be, if you make that, based on this conversation and the previous one, we will make sure that happens with the adopted budget.
Okay.
That will reflect that transfer into the city manager's office.
Great, yeah. Thank you. And we had a long discussion about community engagement. This has been, you know, something that is part of our strategic goals. I think we've done a lot of really good work. You heard, we heard Alma's presentation earlier about our continued efforts towards broader community outreach and engagement. To continue that work, we had a discussion about a specialist in community engagement, and I just want to reiterate my understanding, so, because I know it would be difficult to add a position at this point. So we have, my understanding is we have a vacant senior management analyst position in the city manager's office, and we could reassign that senior management analyst position to a newly created assignment around community engagement to recruit someone with training and expertise in that specialized area. Is that correct?
Yes, with that flexible title, we can have a working title that is consistent with that intent if the council wants to, if you're consistent with that, because we would be using what was formerly the chief of staff position, which is a senior management analyst classification, is a broad classification. We could have a working title that's community engagement specialist or something of that nature and hire somebody with that specific expertise. We would work with HR to do that.
And that would be working directly and supporting our constituent services team, of course, who's doing a lot of similar work. Okay, wonderful. And we could make that change without any budgetary impacts, right?
Correct, that would be neutral, in fact-
Carol wouldn't have to scramble.
Unless there are many objections from the council, that position, the senior management analyst already exists, it's vacant, and so that would just be a job description issue.
Okay, great, thank you. I'm gonna be asking for that. And then finally, this is more of a language item. In our initial strategic planning session, I don't remember what month it was, maybe February this year, I had made the suggestion, and we had discussed, I didn't hear opposition, but that was to add the term "health" to our goals around the public's safety. It was encouraging us to consider the public's health and safety. Is that something that we could make, of course, with council support, make a change for? Okay, great, that's it from me, thank you.
Any other comments? You wanna, you wanna go? Oh, Don, do you, do you wanna go?
Doesn't, doesn't matter, you can go.
Yeah, I always go last, so.
Okay, I'm voting for whatever these kids want, okay? I'm okay with that. It's hard for me to focus. I am always gonna support parks and park improvements and infrastructure, anything we can do to improve what things look like. I know it stays and it lasts. Costa Mesa Tennis Center, I know we've got $320,000 allocated, what's that for?
Councilmember Harper, the current, in the proposed budget, that is for the LED upgrades, upgrades of the light show LED.
The lights.
But, yeah, exactly. And in the current year budget, we have $300,000 for other improvements like sports surfacing, and I think, I think maybe some restroom improvements and things like that.
Yeah, do you think we could get that up to $900,000? And, you know, that, that Mesa Tennis Center is dilapidated, and I don't have a dog in this fight either. I don't hit a tennis ball over there, probably never will, but I know a lot of people that love it. I know we've got a petition with 200 people that signed it. And when you think about the value of the property that Mesa Tennis Center sits on, it's probably a $30 million piece of real estate, and I think it represents the city really well. To redo that, that facility and those courts, I think you make a lot of people happy. I think you could bring in UST tournaments, you'd bring in pickle, I mean, eventually, your tennis court could be easily with a few, not, not, not permanent modifications, they can make it a pickleball tournament, and it's a big deal, and I think it's bringing a lot. So maybe I get some council support on that, or if there's some room in this budget.
Don, did you say $900,000?
It's about $900,000.
Where are you coming up with that?
Some of the residents-
Right, for Harper.
That's okay, you can, it's okay to interrupt me, I like that. Some of the residents grabbed some data from, they got contractors that did tennis courts, and they, they did the tennis courts, the nets, screens, the facility itself, which I actually threw $100,000 on top of, because I'm surprised it is what it is, and maybe it'll come in more, but I'd like to take a shot at it. Maybe we get everything done, but, but the, but the tennis center itself, and the restrooms are terrible. So I think for $900,000, we get lights and everything, everything done, and it just seems like a reasonable investment, so.
So, Councilmember Harper, let me go ahead and answer. I'll be coming before you in two weeks with some year-end recommendations. We can see how council can discuss some funds at that time. The 2324 budget is essentially fully balanced at this time, so we can see what we can opt and we can do.
We can do, okay. I really appreciate it, you're gonna make a lot of people happy. Tell me, without the state funds, the $14 million taxpayer dollars that were given to us for the parks, we're at $16 million in capital improvements, what does next year look like, the year after this? And I mean, I know we've got $290 million in CUP projects, or CIP projects. What does it look like? Are we $16 million at that time, and how long does that $290 ever take to get done?
Rajah, did you want to answer yours?
It's probably a rhetorical question, isn't it? I'm sorry for asking, but.
So, Councilmember Harper, we have a CAN allocation, which is capital asset needs allocation, which, you know, we budget 5% of our budget towards capital improvements. On top of it, we generally get almost about $10 million worth of other grants. We get, we get Measure M monies, we get gas tax, we have, there is another federal grant that we already received, but we didn't budget for this year, but because of the number of projects we have, it's almost $3.5 million. So that we'll be budgeting in the next fiscal year. So, so we typically do get that kind of funding. So our capital budgets typically tend to be in the $20 million range every year.
Did you say 30 million?
20, 20 is, is pretty much assured, but then if you get more grant funds and other monies, we add to that.
So probably, okay, probably 20 million the next year to get stuff done, okay. I want to ask a little bit about, on page two of the agenda item, item five, talks about leases, there's 2.3 million. I'm just wondering, how much do we have in debt in lease obligations? I, I, and is it typical that cities leverage, and we're a mature city, financially sound, we take on debt to do lease equipment? Is that become our standard policy, Carol?
It's something that we incorporated just recently, leasing for some of our larger apparatus. So currently, we have a master lease agreement for the, the four ambulances, the police armored vehicle, a fire truck, so including, let's see, let me give you a total. Currently, we have about five, less than a bit, under $5 million in, in debt for the multiple items at this time.
Five million. You know, that is one, one area that in a mature, successful company, in a mature, successful city, I mean, I would, I would push back against. I would always want to pay cash for our equipment. I know, I know leveraging sounds great and sexy and great ROI, but I just want to make that comment, I guess. I know, I think you allocated $1 million for debt service for this fiscal year for the leases?
Not for the leases. That was because we are, we've been talking recently, the last few months, about the need for the replacement of our aging fire stations two and four, and our police West Side Station for going up for a bond. So we're trying to start to implement that debt into our general fund, so we're well prepared for it in the future.
So what's our total, and that's a bond, right? Is that a bond you issued? What's the total current bonds issued, and what is that bond gonna be?
We don't have any current bonds outside of our lease revenue bonds. That's the only one. And to be honest, for a city our age and for a full-service city, we, there's not, this is essentially hardly any debt.
No, I appreciate that, and I think we should stick to that discipline, so I just want to encourage that. So, good for you, and I would, I would support that.
And I just wanted to clarify, Carol, the $5 million, isn't that the principal balance on the lease, not the annual debt service payment?
Correct. Thank you for the clarification. That's the full, the debt service payment is $400,000 and change, just ballpark figure a year for a $5 million, and most of these are, will be paid within the next five to six years.
Okay.
And just to put into perspective, Councilmember Harper, one fire engine, one fire apparatus is literally a million, maybe even up to a million too, given the equipment that's on, a pumper or a ladder truck, our mobile command vehicle was a million dollars. When we purchase those outright, I think our equipment annual budget to replace our rolling stock, which is pretty massive, it's only $5 million in total, five to six million in total that we have in the equipment replacement fund every year, and our rolling stock is massive. So we have multiple fire trucks, we have six ambulances, we have maybe 50, 60 black and whites, we have heavy equipment and machinery that our public works department uses to do street repairs and things like that. We have very heavy machinery, and it's only now that, I'm actually really proud of the work that we've done setting aside a consistent funding stream for our equipment. That's a fund that actually used to be in the red, now it's in the black, I'm happy to say, and we're leveraging for the larger pieces of equipment, the million-dollar apparatus, we are leasing them over a seven to 10-year period. They have a useful life of 15 to 20 years, and we also have a double A-plus rating from the rating agencies because of the fact that we're conservative. And so I agree with you that debt is not the panacea, but well-timed, well-used, strategically done, is an outstanding way to manage our assets and our infrastructure, and keeping our fleet and our facilities up to date.
Thanks. Okay, so we have a big fleet, so we have to borrow money. I just don't agree with that, so I appreciate it, and I know it's, it feels right sometimes, and interest rates have been low, but never, it doesn't work in high-interest rate environments, and it's just a good, I will say again, it's a good discipline. Large, mature companies sometimes don't, usually don't, so I'm just encouraging that, no, no harm. What's the total sales tax from, that comes from Sales, South Coast Plaza?
I don't have it right here off the, off, off of my information, and it's, to be honest, sales tax has some, we're pretty much held to state law. We have to be very careful what kind of information we do provide for proprietary reasons. So only certain classifications in the city are even allowed to take a look at that, at those detailed information.
Our property taxes, can you disclose that?
Property taxes, let's see, I think we just sent out a year, let me get that to you.
For South Coast Plaza?
Oh, South Coast Plaza, that can, I can provide that later. I don't have it with you.
You can't provide that later? Is that a significant portion of-
That information is public record.
I thought so.
Yeah, that information is.
Yeah, okay. You know, I, I, I think I know the sales at South Coast Plaza, so I think I could figure it out, but it's a significant portion. I guess in, in administering our city, I look at, some wise person told me, and they're out there right now in the, in the, in the audience, said, you know, first, inflation is wonderful for government, and I can see that now. I didn't really understand that until I sat here and looking at the budget, but inflation's wonderful. Recession's, you know, lag about 18 months that really hits cities. So recession, 18 months later, the city feels it. So I'm just cautionary about how we protect ourselves financially with, you know, malls are, are shrinking in America. They're, they're evolving, and I think, and I'm seeing signs in the Bay Area of things slowing down, wages, wages lowering, and our business has been, six months has been slowed down. So I expect things to slow down, and I think our, I'm just cautionary about, so I'm talking about debt and, and how we manage our finances. So I just want to bring that up, and that's why I asked the question. What's our pension debt? What's our total pension debt?
I'd have to get that number two.
The unfunded.
The unfunded liability? I can get that number two.
320, 340?
It's around that, that number.
It's bigger, isn't it? Is it closing in at 400?
Just right off the cuff, closer to about 340, 350, last time I looked at it.
I was just guessing, I guessed, I thought, I know the last time you said it was 320, I was just guessing it went up, so. One of the things, and I'm probably gonna be speaking Greek to most everybody here, but I spent my entire career looking at KPIs and metrics, and when I came here, when I was first elected council, I talked about metrics, to measure performance, and for all the good information, and I think you did a wonderful job of putting together a package, and it's accurate, and it's got a lot of information, and, but the one thing it doesn't tell me is how we perform and how our city performs. And one of the, one of the commitments I quietly made to myself is to try and implement a structure for every council member that exists here today and exists in the future, so they can- member that exists here today and exists in the future, so they can look at the budget and say, how are we performing? And I'm just going to give you an example of something really basic, really basic. If I had an HR department, and three years ago, I had 500 employees, and I measured, what's my cost per person in my staff? And then this year, I compared that. Those are the kinds of things, you know, for our police and fire, maybe for fire department, what's our, what's our cost per person in Costa Mesa? What's our cost per, you know, event that occurs? And I just think it'd be very helpful for council to have an analysis like that. The, when I look at some of the numbers, and I'm not asking you to explain them, but when I look at the, I think these are by department, I got city council, you know, over since 2019, it's up 12%. That's pretty good. City manager office, up 8%. HR is up 44%. Doesn't make a lot of sense, does it? Finance is up 69%. Parks and Rec is up 29%. Police, 27%. Fire and Rescue, 24%. Development Services is up 48%. That's over a five-year period. I'm just making the point that we don't have any analysis that explains what that is. And there's a way to measure that stuff individually, because those percentages don't make any sense, but they might on a per-service basis make sense. And that's just what I wanted to, hopefully I made some sense to you, Carol, at all. And I talked to you afterwards, I've talked to you before about it. I'll tell you one thing that doesn't make much sense. On page 35, tab four, page 35, I look at the salaries and benefits are up 32% from 2021, but the employee headcount's only up 8%. So, you know, that tells me we're hiring a lot of expensive professionals. Maybe it's warranted, maybe it's right. But there's no metrics to tell me that's a good thing or a bad thing. And that's kind of my point. And again, my underlying point is, measuring things using metrics allows council to see that the staff is performing and our city's performing. And the only way, that's the only way they can hold them accountable. So I want to make that point. That's what's missing in the budget. That's the hardest thing for me. When I look at this, and I've read it twice, I understand it, but it's still frustrating for me to look at. And I, I've always offered to work with you folks on what I really want to see in detail and go through that, and I'm still willing to do that. And I think with that, sorry, kids, I think that's my only, that's, I'm done. Thank you very much. Unless you want to respond, Carol?
We could, if you would like, I'm more than willing to sit down with you and talk.
Yeah, okay.
All right. By the way, just, I have to say this before we go to Mayor Protem. South Coast Plaza is not a mall, okay?
Oh, sorry about that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Mayor Protem.
Just looks like one.
I want to get some public comment, but I just have a quick question for our city manager. I just want to get some clarification on the suggestion that, I think it's a suggestion that Councilmember Enner just raised about that open position. We're not making any decisions about the scope of work tonight for that position, correct?
No, that's, Council, I think, is going to survey probably a couple of other cities and some community engagement specialist language that we can put together sort of the best practices around that type of a position, and then go forward with that in terms of the working, sort of a working title format.
Okay, but that, this is the first time I'm hearing of that type of scope for a position. So it presupposes that there's a consensus to do that? And I personally think that we've got some other policy priorities that merit some of our resources, namely development services, economic development. So I don't want to put the cart before the horse here, but I just want to make sure that that discussion is part of a larger conversation we have with regards to meeting those policy priorities.
Yeah. So I, yeah, so I think this is the feedback that we need tonight on that, if that's, if there's consensus around that, or keeping the position as it is as the chief of staff, or something else.
Okay. Well, I think we need to have a larger conversation as a council about that. But I'll put that up to my colleagues.
Right. I agree. I think it's an interesting idea to explore, and I've got a lot of thoughts on it. But I think it's beyond the scope of what we're prepared to vote on today. And really, we haven't had an opportunity to have the public weigh in. So I think we should defer that to maybe the meeting that you were talking about, where we address some of the other expenditures. I have a question about page 12 of the PowerPoint. Okay, so the third bullet, requesting to implement a new policy to fund the differential amount, so forth and so on. So, okay, I don't understand, you know, it says a new policy. I just don't get why we need a policy or why we need to address it like this. Let me explain to you why. Okay? So cannabis money comes in. A certain amount of that money is restricted and it goes to arts. A certain amount of that money is restricted, it goes to the first-time homebuyers, okay? Then the rest of the money goes into the general fund. Once it goes into the general fund, it's not, it's not, as I understand, not segregated as the cannabis general fund. It's, it goes into the general fund with the property taxes, the sales tax, the fees, and everything like that. So I look at this and I see there's really no need for a policy in the sense that if we want to fund the arts program, which I personally support, we fund the arts program. And if there's any money in the cannabis restricted fund that we could use to defray that expenditure, we use it. So I guess I just feel like this is a wasted bullet. I mean, it's like, why do we need it? Can you explain to me why we need a, it says a new policy? Why? Because I'm not about making policies that we don't need to make, you know? It's like, just like, give me what we need to fund. We're the city of the arts, let's have arts. And if some of it can be, you know, underwritten by this fund, great. And if we don't have enough, we'll just pay sales tax to it, or property tax to it, or whatever to it. So why am I saying this bullet?
This was an intent from staff, so that way it wasn't continually back to you for every single budget, to allocate additional money towards the arts and master culture fund, to fully fund the arts and culture plan. So it was just an intent for us to, as we prepare the budget, to automatically assume that we can utilize general fund to offset any revenues that we're not anticipating to receive from the half of a percent of cannabis.
Right.
We do receive additional cannabis funds in the general fund, the 6%, Measure X as well. So we just wanted to tie it, but it's council's discretion. It's up to you whether or not you wanted to change it. You don't want a policy, you want it to come before you every year. This was just our attempt to essentially provide a policy to fully fund without having to designate annually. However, we can do whatever council.
Well, but every year, we decide whether we're going, so we're not saying by this policy that we're in perpetuity going to fully fund in other years, right? Don't we always look at these on an annual basis?
We look at these on an annual basis.
Okay, so I guess my only point is, I just don't see the purpose of having this, you know, this issue raised. It's not a big point. It's just, you know, when I see that topic raised, because I was so involved in it, I read it really carefully. Okay, so...
Mayor, can I just clarify?
Yes.
Because I think there's a, just a minor technical, but substantive point with the fact that the fund isn't a deficit. So in order to track and make sure that the arts and culture master plan expenses didn't get lost in the big general fund, the arts and culture master plan expenses are in a separate arts and culture master plan fund. And so in order for us to fund that plan by year one, year two, year three, year four, as the plan was adopted, the only revenue stream right now that goes into that fund is the little half cent on cannabis, which is insufficient to fund the full master plan. That's, hence the bullet, is to get your authority to fund the deficit from previous years, because the half is, the half cent actually mathematically will never pay for it. It's too small a number. So this is just to make sure that we fund the arts and culture master plan retroactively, which that'll, we'll talk about that at the next meeting. But going forward for next year, and then yes, every year, you would have to make that decision, because the little half cent won't be sufficient to fund it.
By the way, it's not a little half cent. It's...
I'm sorry. Didn't mean to say it that way.
Yeah, no, it's not a little half cent, because a little half cent means one, you know, one penny is 1%, and a half a cent is, it's, it's, we get 7%, and of those percentage, a half of, one of those percentage points goes to it.
Correct. It's just we would need to get many millions to be able for that half cent to actually fund the plan.
Okay.
So hence, it's a, it's a technical thing, but it, we can't transfer money around without your authority. And so this is part of the, of why we have this conversation tonight.
Right.
But you don't need to do it in perpetuity. You can say it's okay for next year, and next year, we'll revisit it again. But that's why it's there.
Okay. Anyway, that's all I've got. Let's open it up to the public.
Hi.
Hold on one second.
No, right here, right here, Kay.
Why are you gonna talk?
Oh, but you're gonna talk to your... Yeah. Let me know when you're ready.
Yeah, no, I'm ready.
Okay. My name's Jaclyn Dresso. I'm a resident of Eastside Costa Mesa. I have three children here. Hopefully, they're all still here. And we live right near Brentwood Park, and we really support the renovation, moving this into a phase one expenditure, so we can get this going. I know our friend Amy has been working on this a long time. Our children, as you can see, they have a lot of energy, and they need a park. The sand at Brentwood Park is disgusting. There's no benches, there's no swings. It breaks all the time. We really need a better playground for our community. And this is my Kaia. Did you have something to say?
And so, we want to make the playground a better place.
Yeah. So, you know, we have a little baby. We'd love to take him. It's just, it's not really suitable for children in its current state. So please, please move this in phase one, so we can get started on the renovation. I'd also like to recognize that my oldest daughter is a Pilot Cup champion. So thank you for talking about Pilot Cup today. But Taylee, wherever she went, she gets congratulations. First second-grade team ever to win in the Pilot Cup. So very exciting for us and the Woodland community. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Are you ready?
Uh, yeah, yes. A second. Yes, yes.
Hi, I'm Megan Sampson. I live right around the corner from Brentwood Park. I brought my three kiddos in here today because we were in support of keeping the Brentwood Park on the phase one plan. And my kiddos have something to say, if I can control the little one. All right, Lo, your turn.
What do you want at the park? Can you tell me? Say it loud. Tell them, tell them. No, two, okay. Can you tell them what you want? All right, she has something written down, so. Do you want to tell them how you normally get to the park?
I normally...
You're fine.
I normally get to the park by going on my scooter and bike or roller skate. My favorite park is Lions Park, because it has swings and a zip line. It does not look as nice as, Brentwood does not look as nice as it does. And it does not have swings. I think it needs to look as good as Lions Park, and have space for families to sit and watch their kids play. Brentwood Park is, is not as good as it stands. I think it should have a better space to play.
Can your nana go?
And my nana cannot go to the park.
There's not any sidewalks. All right, thank you. Do you want to say anything? Thank you.
Hi, you have the floor.
Hi, good evening. My name's Amy. I think you've seen me before. I'm here to support the PACS Commission's motion to move Brentwood from phase two to phase one in the SIP schedule and make it a priority this year. I know because of the Dave Min funds and the Katrina Foley funds and some other grants that you've given, Brentwood has been knocked down again on the priority. But this has been a 16-year project in the making. I know the family who sold the space to the city of Costa Mesa, the Park surname family, did so with the intention of making it a great space for the city. The city, in my opinion, hasn't delivered on that promise. They could have sold it to the highest bidder and, you know, developed it into more housing and less green space. But it really needs to be taken care of this year. As Councilmember Harper, things can change next year. The tides can shift of the economy, and then it can get, you know, the CAN can get kicked down the road again. So can we just make this a priority? We're not asking for much, just some ADA, you know, sidewalks, some benches, some swings, some usable equipment for the toddlers that, you know, there's so many families that use it. So we just hope that you make it a priority for this year. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. You have the floor.
Good evening. I appreciate the report overall. I do have one concern. My name's Becca Walls. I'm the chair of the Animal Services Committee. Overall, the report's fine. I do have a concern that I feel like there's a lack of transparency, that we're using the budget as a way to slip animal care services back under the police department. If you remember the history of animal care services, it was removed from the police department because the oversight was terrible, the transparency was terrible, reporting was terrible. So I'd like to hope with our new police people that were promoted, that we're in a better system now. But I just want it on the record that, you know, I don't think my comments are going to change any direction of this. But the purpose, six years ago, why this was examined was because the police weren't managing that well. And so to use the budget as a way to slip this back into the PD kind of seems just shady, really. And it seems like kind of a bait and switch of like, we had something going, and we're going to use the budget as a way to knock that out. It's also concerning that the animal service, the contracts are due in 15 days. They expire in 15 days. So now you're going to put oversight to another department who hasn't been involved. And it just seems like using the budget to do that kind of, doesn't feel fair. You know, it feels like it's tucked in. It's this little tiny piece, but yet it's a big move for our city. So when you're talking about half cents and percentages, animal services, we always get the like, oh, well, your money's a drop in the hat. But, you know, we're over a million dollars in on our current contract. So I'm not against the police department. I hope with our new regime that it's a better situation than in the past. But I also want everyone to be aware, there has to be accountability so that history doesn't repeat itself. So we went from a scenario where things were horribly bad, and the police department was condoning the really bad things. And so I'm going to hope our police department currently won't condone that, and that they'll hold transparency and records and good reporting and responding to records requests in less than 60 days and things like that. So thank you for your time, and hopefully that'll be taken into consideration.
Thank you. Okay, good. You have the floor.
Um, thank you. I would really like some swings at the park. My sister and her other toddler friends, they don't have much to play on at their little playground. And I would also like some swings. And my sister and me really love swings. And I bet everyone else who goes to the park would like swings. Thank you. Good morning. Thank you for raising money for Brentwood Park. Is there a way to get the park builder builded faster? Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Stevens, and members of the city council. I'm Christina, a local resident of Eastside Costa Mesa. I've been coming to meetings here, whether it be with you folks or through the Parks team for the past couple of years. And I wanted to say what a huge milestone it is to see Brentwood Park as a line item on the CIP budget for $650,000 this year. I want to say thank you for your support over the past two years to see to it that Brentwood has enough funding allocated to reimagine the space with... to see to it that Brentwood has enough funding allocated to reimagine the space that the community it serves. I showed up tonight because I really care about Brentwood Park. It's my local neighborhood park that serves so many families that live around the park and use it weekly. There's a significant investment going into parks in the city of Costa Mesa, which all the residents greatly appreciate. My hope is that Brentwood Park can be prioritized as a phase one project for this fiscal year. Brentwood Park has been waiting, I guess, 16 years now to prioritize. And I have faith in the Parks Commission and Public Works Department to update Brentwood Park this fiscal year and hopefully make it Costa Mesa's first sustainable park. I actually have some pictures on the screen, but I don't know how to access them. Is there still a way to do that? Sorry. Not sure how to find them. Oh, Fabian photo, okay. And then you just Thank you. Being that I live near Brentwood Park and, and go to this park, this is showing all of the families gathering. There were, there were actually over 100 kids. This picture shows about 50. And all of their families collaborating here to meet up and head out for trick or treating. It's a huge staple amongst the community. It's highly utilized. And how it currently serves the community is, is really, we could do much better, especially with so much money going into parks. So I really hope that we can prioritize it and make sure that it happens this fiscal year. Thank you so much.
Oh, sorry, Jen. Go ahead.
It's okay. Switch sides on you. Good evening again, Council and staff. I am a member of Five PAC, but I am only speaking in my personal capacity tonight. I first want to thank Director Melina and her staff for putting together the budget. It's really comprehensive and clear and represents a lot of really hard work on the part of herself and the staff. So I really appreciate that. I also wanted to thank City Manager Farrell Harrison for including the reference in the staff report to the ongoing negotiations with Newport Mesa. Getting the resources that we need to make that project successful is obviously really important. Just to editorialize a little, it does seem a little odd to me to see staffing positions being funded out of contingency funds. And as my prior comments on Harper Park noted, you know, I think we need to work a little more on our coordination between Newport Mesa and our staff. So I'm gonna be watching that with great interest. It would be great if PACS could be involved with that as well. I'm sure that they are already aware. I also wanted to just, you know, it's hard to follow this, these wonderful families here. And I just wanted to highlight something to you, which is the difference between our budget and actual spending on CIP, specifically on parks projects. We are allocating $15 million to parks, which is spectacular. I don't know when we've put so much money into parks. But it won't mean a lot if we can't get shovels into the ground. Inflation is still sticky and we've already seen this with a number of our items that we've brought forward and then had to reject because the bids are coming in really high. So every day that we don't get projects out to bid, we're losing value on the money that we've already allocated. And so, you know, honestly, I'm to the point that I wish we would actually just hire someone to work on parks as their project manager. Because I feel like we really need to get moving on a lot of the projects. And, you know, we talk about our budget reflecting our values. And I think that that's true. But no one in the community really cares about the budget on the paper. They care about what the budget represents and how it impacts their communities. I think you see that here tonight. And I know me and my CMAPs colleagues have been hard on Director Seth Raman in the past for not moving as fast as we'd like on our active transportation projects. But frankly, he is flying on those compared to some of our projects. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention and I appreciate your time this evening.
Thank you. Okay, I don't, I don't see anybody else in the chambers that wishes to speak. So let's go to Zoom. Anybody?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Call in user three, please.
Call in user three.
Sorry, call in user one.
Call in user one. You have the floor.
Yes, I'd like to agree with the former speaker regarding the animal shelter. And there were so many things that were wrong that caused it to be shifted to parks and rec. And it doesn't appear that those issues were ever truly corrected at the park and rec as far as returning phone calls, licensing, and things along that line. That the Animal Shelter Committee, although they're very dedicated, none of their issues and none of their suggestions have truly been formatted in what's going on. Let's hope that when this goes to the Police Department, that we're going to have some level to oversee what's going on with our animals. Our animals have no voice. If we don't speak for the animals and have people who genuinely care, we're just lost as a city. So you're responsible for the voice of the people and the voice of our animals. And right now, neither of them are being addressed. So to the Police Department, it's new staffing, new policies, but don't freeze out the community because those are stats and information that we need to have and should be easily available when a resident needs them. Phone calls should be returned and policy should be revealed and followed. And there's things going on now that aren't. I'm very concerned about those two contracts that are going to be up in less than two weeks. And here we are in sort of chaos in transferring and getting these things done. The timing is, just couldn't be worse. When a time of critical, critical mass for animals that are being not at our shelter, but in every other shelter in, in the county are losing their lives every day. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on Zoom?
Cynthia McDonald, please.
Ms. McDonald, you have the floor.
Good evening again. I realize that the budget's pretty much cast in concrete, but I do have some questions. Because we have a non-compliant housing element, are you anticipating a reduction in grant funding? You should. The developer of the One Metro West project hasn't begun its project. In fact, it hasn't closed escrow because title hasn't changed hands. Are you processing a new application such as an SB 35 project? And how does this affect the fees you anticipate collecting? And while I'm encouraged by the funds being allocated for the housing element planning efforts, I am concerned that you are not setting aside enough funds for environmental impact reports. An EIR starts at 1.5 mil. And if we have to do multiple EIRs, we can use those funds up really quickly. Since we don't know what the state is doing with its proposed emergency op center on Fairview Developmental Center, we may have to bifurcate those tasks. Then, I completely sorting, support increasing funds for the tennis center. It's been neglected for so many years and the deferred maintenance is gonna cost us. I still am concerned about the method of the cannabis revenue calculation. It seems more like a guesstimate to me. And then finally, the Belfast signal I see is still on the budget. We don't really need that. We need a crosswalk at McCormick. The sidewalks are not ADA compliant. They need to be fixed. And the median looks like hell, frankly. So I appreciate some answers to those questions. Thank you.
Next speaker is Mark Buchsovich, please.
Good evening, Council. Sorry, I couldn't attend in person. Just arrived back from Sacramento. Yeah, I just, I'll just keep it brief. Thank you for actually moving this item up. I think it's really helpful to many folks, including myself. I just wanna reiterate for the most part, ten to nought comments that we need to be spending our parks money. And I'll also just add that I'm really content with the direction we're going with our active transportation money. So keep it short today. Thank you.
Thank you.
No further speakers, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, closed public comment. I'll entertain a motion. Motion made by Councilmember Chavez, seconded by me.
Thank you, Mayor Stevens. I wanna move staff recommendation for the budget.
Okay, I'll, I'll second that. And then if any other council members wanna offer friendly amendments, I'll, I'm open to that.
I'll make a friendly
Hold on one second. We're, we're on discussion mode, yeah.
All right. Yeah, I'd like to make a friendly amendment to that, Councilmember Chavez, which is to, as noted by several folks tonight, try and accelerate Brentwood Park's construction and move that to a priority as a phase one, as we're calling it. I am very sensitive to the fact that we've got a lot of park projects. But I also think that it is prudent to try and move as quickly as possible. As some members pointed out, we are losing value of our money allocated every day. So we need to try and get this projects in the ground. And Brentwood Park has been delayed for a very long time now.
Yes, I, I will agree with, just a caveat, which is just, I think phasing has been used as an interesting concept in terms of like, what's gonna be expedited and what's not gonna be expedited. Just to reiterate to the public that while we're saying yes to phase one, logistically speaking, we still have to do the, use the funding that was given to the state and the county. So as long as, you know, that funding gets used up first, I don't see why we can't practice it afterwards. Unless City Staff has anything, any concerns on that.
Second, second agrees with the amendment.
Yeah.
Okay, good. Any other friendly amendments? Okay, so you wanna speak to the motion?
I do. I will, I will, I'll begin with saying this. Our rural city council, really simple. It's down to three things. Is the community safe through the fire emergency? Is about, is the budget balanced in terms of are we putting money or are we self-funded? And are we doing our best to improve the quality of life of our residents? This budget does all three things. Once again, we're proving our commitment to public safety and fire and police. We're having 32% of our budget being going to, to public safety because we understand the importance of making sure we have a, a safe community. This budget is balanced. And in fact, we are even having a bit of reserves to put in ready funds. That's important to me. Make sure we're not overspending. And, and third, we are improving the quality of life of our residents, particularly this, this time around, with how much we're focusing on parks. And I just wanna focus a bit on that for a moment. Ketchum Libel Park and Shawmar Park have been two parks that have been put on the CIP budget for over four years. Brentwood Park, I'm very proud to say is also in the budget. But those two parks are important because those are two parks in Westside Costa Mesa that have been, in some parts, forgotten. Kind of like Brentwood Park. And it took four years for us to huddle together funding, huddle together support from our community partners with Senator Dave Mann and then we're in Carpe Norris. Those parks will be revolutionary for a community in Costa Mesa that has for so long felt forgotten. I think as long as you can prioritize those two parks first, I see no reason why we can't have Brentwood also be in phase one. But I just wanna reiterate to the public that we are doing our best we can with our staff resources to move these projects forward. To the comment of someone in public comment, we have rehired outside of people to move projects forward. We're doing all that we can in our, our budget and our sphere to move as quick as we can. The only ask the public is don't focus on phase one, phase two. Just focus on the fact that we're funding these things. Focus on the fact that we're prioritizing the community and the park avenue. But with that, I also want to acknowledge that while this is a great budget, we also need to be looking in the future. We just passed Measure K, which means for the first eight years, we can finally develop housing in Costa Mesa, much needed housing in Costa Mesa. I said last Thursday, we lost 7,000 residents in the past three years since 2019. I guarantee you a lot of it has to do with cost of living, cost of rent, the cost of owning a home here in Costa Mesa. And I think it's important for us to be pivoting a bit away from solely focusing on quality of improvements to focusing on customer service for our residents who wanna get EDUs in their, EDUs built in their properties, for residents that own small businesses, and for bigger businesses that wanna choose to divest in Costa Mesa. So I think this is a great budget. I wanna thank our city team for doing an amazing job. This was a very seamless budget. I wanna thank members of the audience for being vocal and speaking up about the priorities they have. But more importantly, I just wanna say this budget is a commitment to visiting Costa Mesa. This council is in fact focused on making sure you're safe, is focused on making sure we have a healthy budget, and is focused on making sure we're improving quality of life for all, all residents.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember. So on behalf of the second of the motion, I just wanna say, as I've done numerous times, but it always bears repeating how impressed I am about how clear and concise and direct the presentation is. And, you know, it's, it was, Abraham Lincoln said, if I had more time, I'd write a shorter letter, you know? And it's, it's like, it takes a lot of time to distill complicated concepts into a simple presentation that's understandable. And so if I can understand it, then it's understandable. But I also wanna point out, it's, so there's the Finance Department who is presenting this. And, and of course, our city manager has a great background in the Finance Department. But this is a, I mean, I'm talking about a total team effort. And when I talk about a total team effort, I'm just not talking about the people who work for the city of Costa Mesa or the council. The people that live, work for the city of Costa Mesa, of course, are, are an important part of the team. For example, we talked about earlier about our public safety. We have a safe city, so it's a place that people wanna live and people wanna visit. I mean, you know, I'm out and about and I talk, I don't, I don't often leave the city of Costa Mesa, but some people come and visit me sometime within the cities. And people from all over the county and all over the state, they know Costa Mesa as a place that they wanna come because it's a safe city. It's a, it's a city that has beautiful trees and 30 parks. And it's got fairgrounds, you know, and, and a, a world-renowned plaza that's definitely not a mall. And it's, it's, it's got I never said it was a mall. Pavement, pavement condition index. We, we have, we have so many things in this city. We've got, we've got, Paulette's gonna talk to us later, and she trademarked the term eatcation on behalf of Travel Costa Mesa. We have great restaurants, the greatest restaurants. I could go on and on. A-class office complexes. We have a performing arts center. All of these things create a, a value, a tremendous amount of value as a place you wanna live, you wanna visit, you wanna spend your money. It increases the value of our homes, which increases, we have the Chamber of Commerce there, 12,000 businesses in the great city of Costa Mesa, generating, generating tax revenue and generating action in the city. This is a terrific city. It's a vibrant city. And the stuff that we do at the City Council and the stuff that, I mean, we, you know, we talked about the Little League and the soccer and all these things that Costa Mesa United, all these things we did, all the churches and places to worship. The things that we do on council and even the things we do as city, city employees, as great as they are, they're the tip of the iceberg to what this city is about. And all of that comes into this budget. And we couldn't do it without each other. So I just wanna say, I, this is a short, concise way for me to say it's the best city in the world. And we're, I'm proud to be the mayor. I'm proud to live here. And I'm really proud to vote in favor of this budget. So thank you. Who else wants to speak? Councilmember Reynolds?
Yeah, thank you. I had tried to, to flag, but didn't get your attention before we moved on to statements. So I have a couple requests related to my comments with the, oops, and now I've lost my notes. Would, so these are, I think, really just sort of language changes or not necessarily budget changes, but with the maker of the motion, support the move of the Sustainability Manager to the City Managers Department, which she confirmed she's comfortable with, and include health in our public's health and safety goals.
Yes to the first. Second, I don't have enough information to say yes to that.
Yeah, I'd be happy to talk about why I'm interested in doing this. And it, it really is just a, a language change and something that I had brought up and we had some discussion around at our first council planning session this year. So, see if I can pull it up. Our, that, that particular goal we had framed a couple of years ago to be protect the public's safety. And I remember I was in that working group, I think that was over at the, the senior center. And the reason we framed it that way is we really wanted to start thinking about how all of the different departments really support safety in the city, right? So of course, it's our Police Department. Of course, it's our Fire Department. It's also our Public Works Department that works on the roads, right? So a lot of the expert, active transportation projects that we're implementing are about safety. transportation projects that we're implementing are about safety in our community. So, I'm interested in pulling health into that, because of so many of the lessons that have been brought forth from COVID, for example. And there's really a lot of discussion about how city infrastructure affects our community health. So, one of the clarifications is, I'm certainly not trying to like add a health department. What I want to do is acknowledge how the work that our staff do every day across multiple departments, again, please, fire, Public Works, our Planning Department, a lot of health organizations now are talking about housing instability as a key driver of health in communities. So, I really want to acknowledge kind of those indicators, right, and that we care about our public's health, and that our city staff services, our city services are key drivers in community health.
I'm curious with the second things, but I think for me, that's a discussion that's a bit more broad, that we would probably have at a redux of a study, a council group's priority setting. I know it's a minor word change, but it seems like it's more attached to it than just a word change. And for that, I'm a little hesitant to add it to the budget on the floor. But I am happy to add the Sustainability Manager to the City Manager's Office. That's fine, in my opinion.
Yeah, I'm okay with that as the second. Yeah.
Okay. Would you support my recommendation to focus the Senior Management Analyst position towards community engagement? And the reason I'm bringing this up, I don't, yeah, I didn't bring this up at the last study session on a particular budget, because I hadn't sort of thought of that as an approach. But certainly, the topic of community engagement is one that we've had for, as long as we've been sitting on the dais, right? And really, how do we close the gap to engage the community, especially members of our community who have not been previously engaged in local government? What are the different strategies and techniques that we can use to move from our traditional outreach model to really getting out into the community and developing strategies and a toolset to engage, whether it's our senior population that's no longer online, our Latino population that speaks in a different language, our teens and youth who don't use email, right? And so, we've talked, we have inclusion and collaboration in our core values now. We have Inclusive Community in our city's mission statement. And I think that this is sort of a specialty that I think would be really valuable in continuing the work that we've been trying to do to improve our community engagement activities.
So, a lot of what you described, we're doing through our current aides. I know, because I've seen them come to soil where I work to engage with students. I've seen them speak in Spanish to members of the community. I understand the desire to have a person assigned to that role, but these aides are almost more flexible in what they do. And I wouldn't want to just handicap someone in that role. We've already seen the past four years, the difficulty we've had with labeling one of the aides a different title, Chief of Staff. And I don't want to kind of create a box where we're hiring a person that could be used for multiple things, being limited to only one thing, which is community engagement, which I will say honestly, like both EVA and SEDR do well, and they're doing it very intentionally, and they're quite doing that more often than they're doing work in the city.
So, the answer is no?
Yeah, correct.
Okay. Can I ask, so this move, it's unusual, this is my fifth budget now, and it's unusual for us, as part of a budget process, to phase CIP projects. I had brought this up when we did the first CIP study session, and my understanding of the phasing is that we're doing that because there are projects that are time-bound. So, and I had sort of, you know, kind of reconciled that as part of that previous study session. I'm curious what, with the motion as it stands, moving another project into Phase One, what are some of the, what are some projects that get sort of passed up if we make that move?
Councilmember Reynolds, can I answer that question? So, as you know, in addition to these grant projects that we have, the $10 million and the 3.2 million from Foley and 1.2 from Assemblywoman Cory Pietenorres, we also have other funds to other projects too. Like, the Fire Station 4, it's also another grant project that has a deadline. We have a year and a half to complete that project. So, I have, right now, eight project managers in engineering who do bulk of these projects. And we have, if you look at the ongoing projects, we have 90 projects that are on the list. And we are adding 40, some projects in the upcoming fiscal year. So, we have quite a bit of workload among these project managers. Granted, we have some open positions. We have five project managers that we have to hire, that we are trying to recruit at this point. So, while we are trying to work with getting some outside consultants to help us out, we still need people to manage those consultants. We cannot just let the consultants run on their own and manage the projects. So, we need to make sure that we deliver on the grant projects. That's important, that we, otherwise, we lose grant funding. And while we keep commitments on other ongoing projects, Station 2, Station 4, and also, some of the projects that we're already deferring right now are, like the West Side Substation. It's been on the books for a couple of years now. We haven't done much, and now, we actually had to evacuate all the employees from that building because of some issues, and we need to kind of work on that project. But we are deferring that project. Communications Building needs some work. We're deferring that one. So, there are several, you know, we heard about Baleric Park, you know, the asphalt needs upgrade, and I know there are requests for pickleball courts on that asphalt. Again, you know, all that's, already is deferred now, but it'll be deferred even more. So, those are just some examples.
Yeah, and I'll make a comment on that. And I appreciate your explanation of what's getting deferred. And I think for me, and I think the second agrees, unfortunately, with budgets, not everything gets done. And I've seen that with my own parks, Shalimar and Lible for the past four years. I think the priority, and I'll say it again, to reiterate the point, is anything attached to county or state funding obviously is the first priority, because that was timeline out. But to the extent that we've seen the moms over at Work Park organize, I think it is commendable to them and their efforts to move that along after we do all the time-sensitive things. And so, that's where I kind of stand with that.
I agree. Okay, anything else?
Yeah, I guess I will make a substitute motion to accept, yeah, staff recommendation with the movement of the Energy and Sustainability Manager to the City Manager Department, even though I think that's her choice regardless. And I'll leave it at that.
Okay.
Clarification, so, just-
I'm not, well, I'm not seeing a second. So, basically-
I'm trying to second it. Could you not hear me?
Oh, I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Yeah.
Okay, seconded by Mara. Okay, go ahead and-
I have a clarification. So, your second is all your, all your amendments, correct?
No.
No, just the Sustainability Manager move.
So, I thought we agreed with all the things.
She doesn't want to do that.
So, it's removing-
She's just, she's just removing all the things that we agreed to, including the Brentwood Park.
Oh, got it.
And she's, she's saying the staff recommendation, and the only addition is the change of the Sustainability Manager to the City Manager's Office.
Got it, thank you.
Okay, good. Okay, you just speak to the motion.
Yeah, and the reason for that is, I think in the same, you know, I appreciate the sentiment about wanting to discuss more whether we should, you know, include language about focusing on public health, and discuss more on whether a community engagement specialist position is, actually is a priority. I think in the same way, we should, you know, revisit our priorities around how we're phasing projects. The phasing of the projects was developed because we have required deadlines, and we needed to make sure that it was very clear that staff time was going to be focused on those projects with the required deadlines. I think adding a project to that, you know, there's, I think we probably all have our favorite projects that we'd like to add in that Phase One, certainly projects that I've been focused on would get passed up, that other community members are interested in would get passed up. And I am concerned about sort of the equity issues that arise with that. It's absolutely commendable, I think they're gone, that, you know, moms can come out and be here. But we've, you know, we talk a lot about the community members that cannot be here for many reasons. There are people who, you know, are in their second and third jobs right now, that have tried to come here in the past and been unwelcome. Where one of my primary focuses as a council member in my first election and my second election, and through all my time here at the dais, has been really try to focus on writing sort of historical inequities. And we're doing a lot of good work in that direction. It's one of the reasons I'm thrilled for the two parks in Councilmember Chavez's districts, in that I've been 100% behind funding for those parks and prioritizing the efforts on those parks, and hiring contractors who specialize in community engagement and co-collaboration, so that that park design will be one that the community really supports and protects. There are communities that, there are residents, there are children who don't have access to a park right now. And, you know, I get it, everyone wants better facilities at their current park, but there are kids who don't have access to a park. It's why I'm really excited about the parts of the budget that, you know, are directing our city manager and providing her the flexibility she needs to be able to work with our school district and potentially staff opening Newport Mesa Fields in the communities where there is currently no park access. So, the reason I'm proposing this motion, this secondary motion, is that it continues sort of that focus. It continues the, it certainly supports the projects that we have to get done. And I think we can have a follow-up conversation as a council about how we prioritize after that, as we finish our strategic plan goals for the upcoming year.
Council, or Councilmember Marty wished to be heard on the motion?
Yeah, I mean, I agree with where Councilmember Reynolds was headed with this. I actually just think it's a little bit more intellectually honest to say what we can and cannot do. I'm looking at the number of projects that we have already funded. So, these aren't things that we're approving this year. These are things that have been approved for some period of time. Fire Station 6 roof replacement, Police Department emergency facilities remodel, right? That was the thing that we spent a lot of time talking about last year. Police Department's structural foundation repair, West Side Park development, Shalimar Park expansion, Butterfly Gardens. I mean, these are all things, $250,000 has already been allocated for Brentwood Park. So, you know, this isn't a question of, like, what would we like to do in a perfect world? This is just being realistic about all of these projects that have grant constraints associated with them that have to get done, that I think staff is just trying to be realistic with us about, not to mention all of the funding that has already been allocated in previous years. So, if we want to add Brentwood Park in, and our motion fails, I mean, so be it. I just think the public should actually be clear that we're not committing to getting probably anything done on it this year. So, we, I mean, we could put the kitchen sink in here, but we at some point need to be really transparent with the public about what's realistic. And I think that's what staff's attempting to do with this budget. That aside, while I have the floor right now, I do just want to thank staff for the work that they've done in putting this together. I think every year, I'm sort of surprised by how far we're able to stretch some of the dollars that we do have. You know, I want to call out in particular, I don't think it's really come up with a lot of attention tonight, but that we are continuing to fund and find ways to allocate more money to some of the rental assistance programs and housing programs that are so vital, and that frankly, we've spent a lot of time over the last year talking about. So, I appreciate that some of the things that we say on the dais are really taken to heart by staff, and that a lot of effort is put into making sure that we can advance some of those goals. So, we certainly can't do everything all of the time, but I really appreciate how far this was, this was able to go, to accomplishing many of the things that have come up in the last couple of years. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem, you wish to be heard on the substitute motion?
No.
Do you support the substitute motion?
No, I don't support the substitute motion.
Okay, all right. Does anybody wish to be heard? Yes?
Yeah. This year-end surplus, talked about the Costa Mesa tennis, when does that occur? When does that, I'm trying to avoid asking you to adjust the motion for, to get funding for that.
The auditors just started their work. Technically, we finish auditing the current year at the end of December.
So, you don't, you don't really know what's going to be, but you think there's going to be a surplus?
At this time, yeah, based on the revenues received, we believe that there'll be at least a $4 million surplus at this time.
So, I'll ask on behalf of the residents that have asked me, but can we fit it into this CIP budget, or is that a no? And if it's a no, I'm going to threaten to bring 10 small children here. No, is that fair? They were all good. I like, I love them, but they seem very effective, more effective than me. No, I'm okay if we get a commitment either way. I just want to see that it's either here, or it's, it comes up in that, what do you call that, next event, whatever.
From my, from my part, just so you know, I totally agree with you-
Yeah.
-that we need to devote at least 900,000 into that tennis center. My preference would be, let's get an operator, let's collaborate with the operator, and let's figure out, you know, is it 900,000, or is it more? Or what is the scope? So, it's like, I just don't have enough, I don't have enough information right now. I know that-
Right.
You, you've-
I have data, yeah.
You've got something on the back of a napkin, but I'm just not prepared to pull the trigger on a number.
Okay, fair enough. A little better than that. I don't, I honestly don't think we, you know, we can get input from the operator. We already have in a sense, so, I appreciate what you're saying. So, I'd like to, as long as I've got some support there, I could live without a motion. The other thing I want to say is, I brought up South Coast Plaza not to call it a mall, and I didn't call it a mall. I was really referred to malls as in retail and shopping centers, because we have them. And while they may be unique, there's a shift in how retail's behaving, and it's going to take a lot of work for South Coast Plaza to maintain where they're at. We have a bit of a unicorn in Costa Mesa. And my druthers would be to operate the city as if South Coast Plaza wasn't part of it, to have an operating budget that fit that, and that's just extra cash that we do capital improvements. I know that sounds crazy, but that's where I wish we were, because a lot of cities like us, same population, live without a South Coast Plaza. So, we have that gift. We've had the gift the last couple of years of major money, I mean, $26 million of federal funds, all kinds of dollars have come in to backstop things we want to do. Inflation has been a gift to a city. I think it shifts. You know, the one stat that bothers me in the analysis of the budget is, you know, we've got a 32% increase since 2021 in the operating budget. It's gone up 32%. Population of Costa Mesa has dropped 2.5%. Lot of reasons for the increase, but on face value, it's concerning. It's concerning, the debt is concerning. I think, you know, we'll deal with it when we deal with it, but I just want to make that point. And I continue to hound on, you know, you think you look at this budget, and it's well done, and I think it's well done. It's from an accounting perspective, great, it's great information. But from a performance and analytical standpoint, and I know that is not what you're after in this environment, but like, it's important. It's important to measure performance and know, we have a department that's not performing. It is part of our job, in my opinion, to hold the city accountable and staff accountable. It's part of your role as a board member, a council member, to hold an operating entity accountable. There's nothing in our strategic plan that says we want to make things more efficient. There really isn't. There really isn't. If you see, the focus is not there. If you see the focus is not there. And so I just want to make that point, and I'll leave it as is.
All right. I'm restraining myself from responding and because of the time. So does anybody have anything else they want to say on the substitute motion? Okay, well then, let's vote on the substitute.
I'll do a roll call vote, please. Okay. Councilmember Reynolds?
Yes.
Councilmember Marr?
Yes.
Councilmember Chavez?
No.
Councilmember Harper?
No.
Councilmember Gamaros?
No.
Mayor Protem Harlan?
Nope.
Mayor Stevens?
No.
Motion carries five to, or two, five with.
Doesn't carry.
Motion fails. Motion fails, I'm sorry. Motion fails, two, five.
Okay. Does anybody want to be heard before we call for the question on the original motion? Okay, I think we've all been heard out. Let's call for the question on the original motion.
Councilmember Reynolds? Councilmember Marr? Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Harper?
No.
Councilmember Gamaros?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Harlan?
Yes.
Mayor Stevens?
Yes.
Motion carries five, two, with Councilmember Reynolds and Councilmember Harper voting no.
All right, excellent. Well done. We passed a budget. Yay. Okay, a balanced budget, yay. All right, let's move on to the BIA manner, which I think is Public Hearing Number Two.
Could you please read the title?
Yes. Business Improvement Area, BIA Reauthorization to Levy Annual Assessment. Presentation by Ms. Reyes, Deputy City Manager.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Tonight's public hearing item is the BIA reauthorization, also referred to, like I just mentioned, the BIA, and the levy of an annual assessment. With me tonight is Travel Costa Mesa President Paulette Lombardi-Fries, who will be providing you with an annual update. But first, I'll start with a background. So state law mandates per the Street and Highways Code, specific procedures and establishment of a BIA, and levy of a voluntary annual assessment.
Excuse me a second. Can you put, can we get the presentation on our screens, please? It's up, it's up. Okay, there we got it. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Great. So on May 5th, the City Council adopted a resolution declaring the intention to levy an annual assessment and set tonight's public hearing. Currently, the city levies a 3% assessment on 11 participating hotels, which we receive 3% assessment, which is based on the sale of overnight guest room stays in the partner Participation in the BIA is voluntary, and as part of this process, each year, staff sends out notices to all hotels and motels informing them about the BIA and of this public hearing. The annual assessment of 3% is transmitted by the hotels to the city. 99% of the assessment is remitted to Travel Costa Mesa and used to fund advertising and marketing endeavors, while the remaining 1% is retained by the city to offset administrative costs. I also want to add that the city does receive an annual allocation from Travel Costa Mesa in the amount of $164,000, which we know that has been suspended due to the pandemic. And that funding is usually used to assist with local branding, community events, and marketing opportunities. And this year, we will be reinstating the amount of $164,000 for fiscal year 2023, 2024. Now I will go ahead and turn it over to Paulette so that she can give her annual update. And Tony, I believe you have the video, you can play it.
Okay, good evening, everybody. Before I begin, there are two people that are in front of me that I need to appreciate and make sure they know how much I value them on our board, which is a total of 13 members, two of which, like I said, are in front of me, Lorianne, our city manager, and of course, Mayor John Stevens. They give of their time, they come to every single one of my board meetings, they contribute, they certainly show and have a desire to elevate our city, not only from residents that live here and people that work here, but also they are committed to making the city a great place to visit. So I just want to make sure that I mention that because you are both valued and thank you for your continued support of Travel Costa Mesa. I have prepared a really long video. It was over 11 minutes long, and Alma said to me, we have a packed, jammed agenda, can you shorten it? And I'm like, oh, because I could sit here and talk about tourism all night. But I know your time is valuable, I did cut it to about eight minutes.
I'm ready to raise it.
A billboard in Venice had us do a double take and a U-turn down the 405. It read Foodies Eat in Costa Mesa and urges Angelenos to take an eatcation.
Porchica adobo.
So we took the challenge.
There's the bone marrow.
Very.
This is our muscles.
Very. Seriously.
It's great to be back with you, and I am in beautiful Costa Mesa in Orange County in Southern California. It's also known as the City of the Arts, and fall is the ideal time to come visit here.
Oh, it's just a short, really a short plane ride from Phoenix, so we can definitely get there.
The brand new Orange County Museum of Art has finally opened its doors.
And Leila Mohammed visited Costa Mesa for a sneak peek.
This beautiful space is more than a decade in the making and finally open for the public to check it out. I'm here now with the Director and CEO of the Orange County Museum of Art, Heidi Zuckerman. So nice to meet you.
So nice to meet you. Thanks for being here on this incredible occasion.
Yes, so when you see the result of all the hard work and the years of planning, what goes through your mind?
I feel so excited to offer the access to contemporary art to the community.
So this gives you a snapshot of what we did over the last eight months or so. We start working on this and preparing this annual report that you received back in April, in February. So the things that we've done the last couple of months are not in here, but we are looking forward to what will everyone see next. And we will extend that campaign as well as growing awareness of the brand, which is the City of Costa Mesa. And we are also looking forward to our next fiscal year, which starts July 1st, to regaining two of our marketing positions back onto our team. A few other things that we're working on as we look into the future is FIFA 2026, which we just had a, two hotels were, had site visits from a small delegation with FIFA. So we are hopeful that we have an opportunity to host one of the teams here in the City of Costa Mesa. And they'll be looking at fields the next time around, so we're going to keep our fingers crossed because I think that would be a great opportunity for us and the community to welcome an international team, as well as the 2028 Olympics. As you know, it's going on in LA, but LA cannot accommodate all of the sporting events and fields and of course, the hotels that are needed. So the direct economic impact with these events will be huge for the City of Costa Mesa, because obviously, when they come to stay, they're just not staying in the hotels, but they're visiting our restaurants, they're taking advantage of great shopping and the great dining that we have here. So we look forward to working closely with the Orange County Sports Commission, specifically on FIFA and the 2028 Olympics. And with that, I will open it up, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Council, any questions? Yes, Councilmember Reynolds.
Yeah, just one quick question, and I don't know if this is, this may be for our city manager, this may be for Paulette. I'm just curious in looking at how we use these revenues and seeing, you know, a lot of the advertising, is it possible that this could be a source of funding to support our Arts and Culture Master Plan as well? And I'm not suggesting an allocation now, but if that's an opportunity, I think that'd be something great to look into.
We already use some of this funding to fund some projects like the Art Walk. So we are using some of those BIA funds to promote the arts in the city. We can definitely explore other opportunities as well and work with our Parks and Community Services Department, especially with our Arts Coordinator, Lorette.
Yeah, great. Yeah, I think there's a, it seems to me that there's a clear nexus with the Arts and Culture Master Plan, our motto of City of the Arts, and the kinds of activities and assets that help the Travel Costa Mesa brand. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Gamaros?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for that long presentation, but it was very informative and I did enjoy it. So a couple of questions I have. The first thing would be, is do you have any type of collaborative effort with the Chamber of Commerce in regards to how you, you know, bring visitors in and how they interact with, you know, the people that are having hotel stays and, you know, recreating in our community? Do you have any interface that would include the Chamber in that fashion?
That is a great question. I am on the executive committee for the Chamber and am working with David, our newest president of the Chamber, so I look forward to working with him more in depth as we get into our next fiscal year. I know he's working on his budget as well, even though he's calendar year budget, but I think there's a lot of collaboration that can certainly take place with David and Travel Costa Mesa.
Okay, great. Thank you, I appreciate that. And secondarily, you also mentioned that you've been in communications with FIFA and that they have an interest in coming to our city. So I would like for you to, in the future, elaborate and keep the council informed on the progress on that and maybe what their intentions are. For one, how we as a dais can help facilitate something like that. And any integration with any other community services would be, you know, greatly appreciated. And I'm going to mention the Chamber again on that because I think they'd be a useful tool in helping to integrate that possible business source in our community. So thank you once again for your presentation. That's all I have.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you. I don't have any questions, but I just wanted to let Paulin know, I wanted to share just a quick story. wanted to share just a quick story of the effectiveness of your efforts. I work in Los Angeles in Century City, and about a year ago, I was driving, I say crawling home on Olympic Boulevard to get to the 405. And just to my left at Westwood Boulevard, I spotted the billboard Food Easy Eat in Costa Mesa. I snapped the photo of it, too. I was parked the light, so not texting and driving. But several of my friends and family who live in LA have seen that and commented on it. So I can attest to the fact that it captures people's attention and has really been quite effective. So thank you.
Awesome. Thank you.
Okay, so I could make some comments. I don't really have any questions for you, Paulette. I thought it was a good presentation, but I'm just trying to think whether I want to make my, okay, I'll make my comments now. And then when we make the motion, I won't make any comments. The thing about FIFA is really an interesting opportunity. They're thinking about having a team practice in at Jack Hammat. And, you know, just, and so thank you for your efforts. And just to put it in perspective, in, when we had, I think it was last year, 2022, that we had our last World Cup and Morocco qualified. And so I was talking to the guy from the Orange County, Orange County Sports Foundation, and he said that Morocco brought 30,000 fans that didn't have tickets just to support the team. Now, if you can imagine, like, what if we get, I mean hypothetically, what if we get France? Can you imagine 50,000 French people in the City of Costa Mesa and how much they would spend at that place that's definitely not a mall? I mean, it's unbelievable. And so this is a great opportunity. The other thing, too, is in terms of hotels and talking about, you know, South Coast Plaza and, you know, and I'm not picking on you, Don, we just brought, you brought up South Coast Plaza. The plans that the hotels have in our city for the future will absolutely blow away what we have now. I mean, the Sager Rooms have plans. I can't tell you, I'd have to kill you. But Avenue of the Arts, we know that that's planned to be raised and built up again into a four-star hotel similar to what they have in Anaheim at the Weston. I mean, we, long after we've all provided our public service, these hotels and the hoteliers will go on. And I'm sorry, I missed them in my litany of people that are on the team. And so I figure, I guess, we get a second bite of the apple. It's a very important sector of our community. I'm very glad. And it's interesting to be on the Travel Costa Mesa board. And I'm very impressed by the work that you do and then also our hoteliers do. There was one other thing I was going to say. Oh, gosh. Give me a second. Well, you guys are going to be deprived of that thought, I guess. I can't think of it. But maybe I'll do it in my closing comments. But great job. I really, I really appreciate all the work you're doing to support our hoteliers, to support our city, to make it a great place for people to visit. Thank you for what you do.
My pleasure.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, good. Let's open it up for public comment. I don't see anybody coming up to the microphones. Anybody on Zoom?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Close public comment, and I'll make a motion to adopt the staff's recommendation, seconded by Mayor Protem Harlan. I've already, I told you, I already said what I was going to say. Do you have anything to add? Anybody have anything to add? No, call for the question by voice vote.
Councilmember Reynolds?
Yes.
Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Harper?
Yes.
Councilmember Gamaros?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Harlan?
Yes.
Mayor Stevens?
Yes.
Motion carries 6-0.
Okay, we have one more item. Public hearing item number three. Could you please read the title?
Thank you. This is Consolidated Master Fee Schedule Presentation by Ms. Molina, Finance Director.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. On the Zoom, I believe, is Clear Source Terry Mattson, who will be presenting the consolidated fee schedule for you tonight.
Yes, I'm here. Thank you so much. I'm going to share my screen. And let's see. I think the city clerk has to give me ability to share. Oh, okay, perfect. So, you know, Mayor, members of City Council, thank you for allowing me to speak with you this evening. I know you have had a very full and important agenda, so I will do my best to move quickly through this topic and just allow time for you to provide any feedback or questions. Next slide, please. Just by way of agenda, we'll be just talking very briefly about the background of fee setting in Costa Mesa, some general recommendations, an overview of potential fiscal impact, and action items for the City Council to consider. Next slide, please. One more slide. So as a council, you're probably familiar with this, but I'll just be very brief in case any members of the public are interested. As cities, we collect fees and charges for government services that we provide when somebody is receiving sort of a direct service. And we use our tax dollars as much as possible to provide broad, community-wide services. So broad, community-wide services, use of tax dollars, direct receiver of service, direct user of service. A lot of times, we use mechanisms like fees and charges to recover those costs so we can free our limited general fund resources up to provide those broad, community-wide services. Most cities or many cities in California maintain a listing of fees in what they would call a master fee schedule or a consolidated user regulatory fee schedule. Next slide. In 2008, the City of Costa Mesa did adopt a master fee schedule, a consolidated fee schedule. But since that time, as various departments have made changes to their fee schedules and asked the council to consider adopting specific subsets of fees, as those resolutions came into being, that master fee schedule hasn't been maintained. So there are active fees throughout the city, but they're not consolidated into that master fee schedule. At this time, staff recommends a resuming that use of a master fee schedule so that we can improve transparency and we can improve ease of reference to understand what are our current fees in place. Next slide. I talked about this briefly on the prior slide, but we really are seeing a master fee schedule document that could be published on the city's website as a tool for more effective communication with the public when they're curious about what fees might be applicable associated with their request or their project. We also think it provides staff with a more consistent, ongoing review of fees. We want fee schedules to be dynamic. We don't want them to stay static. And so sometimes when you, when you have a consolidated schedule of fees, that's just a matter of practice. You can say every year, I examine and potentially refine that consolidated fee schedule rather than having the potential for things to slip through the cracks. And just that idea of transparency increasing when we have that single repository to identify what are the fees currently in place. And so the primary action that's outlined in the resolution for the council to consider is simply consolidating the city's various existing fees into one consolidated schedule of user regulatory fees. Next slide. We also want to mention that, you know, talking about fees as a dynamic in nature, in 2018, the City Council did authorize annual adjustment of building fees. And they said, hey, we've done an examination of building fees. We want to establish them, but we don't want them to stay static for a length, you know, a long period of time. And so there was an adopted annual adjustment-based general change consumer price index. But that resolution referenced that the adjustment would be based on May-to-May CPI. And May-to-May CPI doesn't come out till mid-June. So a lot of times, that information isn't really usable to inform any sort of upcoming budget. And so if the council wanted to consider it, many communities we work with and staff is in alignment with the idea of adjusting that CPI. So continuing with an annual authorized adjustment, but basing that annual authorized adjustment on the prior-year annual CPI change instead of the May-to-May CPI change. And that gives staff additional time to process updates, to update your permitting systems. And it also provides enhanced information that you can use as you seek to develop your budgetary forecasts. Next slide. We mentioned that if you consolidate a schedule of fees, you have a clearer vision of what fees have been recently updated, what fees haven't been updated in some time, what fees are annually adjusted versus left unchanged without specific city council direction. Staff has met with your FIPAC and identified fees that could potentially be adjusted by CPI under our current boundaries outlined in state law. So state law might set limitations on certain fees where even, you know, we can't annually adjust them. They're just a fixed dollar amount that is predetermined for the city. But there's other fees that you could adjust. You may just make a deliberate choice not to adjust, or you may make a deliberate choice to adjust them. So there is a column in the proposed fee schedule that references FIPAC feedback related to fees that might be logical choices for annual adjustment versus those that would be marked as do not annually adjust without, you know, specific city council consideration. And those would primarily be recreation and facility rental fees, those fees limited by state law, fees where your community goals and values might have some significant impact on even an annual adjustment. Where we see the annual adjustment come to play, come into play more is the development-related fees, your permitting fees, your plan review fees, your field inspection fees. And we do hear from stakeholder groups that they, they do prefer minor incremental adjustments rather than long periods of sort of fee stagflation followed by like a spike. So it aligns to the feedback we hear from actual fee payers. Next slide. You know, this idea of fees being dynamic and occasionally somebody can say, well, if I have this annual adjustment to fees, does that go on in perpetuity? What we tell city councils and decision makers is, we still are bound by parameters of the California Constitution and the California Government Code that direct us to establish fees that correspond to our estimated reasonable cost of service. So we wouldn't want to leave fees unexamined in perpetuity. And what we see as sort of a best practice is a comprehensive fee study performed every three to five years, where you recalibrate your fees, then you do incremental adjustments in the in-between years, and then go back and periodically, comprehensively study fees. A comprehensive study of fees is an intense process, you know, requires a lot of your staff time. And it's an intense effort that doesn't need to happen every year. Staff had started a fee study, but then COVID pandemic hit and priorities were shifted and there was sort of a pause placed on the study. Next slide. You know, we mentioned this primary action being simply consolidate the schedule of fees because all we're asking for is a consolidation of fees and not any creation of new fees or adjustment to existing fees. If the city council said, all I want to do is just consolidate the fee schedule, there would be no fiscal impact to that action because we're just moving fees into one primary document. If the council said, I would also like to apply a CPI adjustment to various fees as identified by FIPAC with a cap on that CPI because we're in a period of sort of volatility with CPI that we haven't seen in a while. So we were thinking a cap of 5%. If the council wanted to move in that direction, the anticipated fiscal impact would be about $200,000 annually. And what's important to note is that this, any sort of enhanced cost recovery you receive is really intended to offset the cost of services you already provide but aren't recovering from fees. It's not intended to fund new services or expanded service levels. Next slide. So before the council this evening, the questions are whether to approve a consolidated schedule of fees, to determine whether the council supports modifying that annual adjustment period for the building fees from a May-to-May window to an, well, prior-year annual adjustment. And then also determining whether to apply any inflationary adjustments to, to other eligible fees as considered by FIPAC. Thank you so much for your time and attention. This concludes my presentation. I'm available to receive any questions or feedback you have.
Counsel?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have one question. It might be to staff, but looking at the attachment one, particularly at the Coast, Miss Senior Center, Normal Hurtsalk Center, and Beleri Community Center, why is there a discrepancy between nonprofits and resident rates? And why is nonprofit lower than resident rates?
I don't know if staff wants to comment. We're happy to comment based on what we see in other communities. Carol, would you like me to chime in? Or would you like to wait for a member of the team?
No, if you could, go ahead and chime in, Terry.
Sure. Councilmember, I think you asked the difference. So there's two differences you're noticing. A difference between resident and non-resident and a difference between resident and nonprofit. Is that what you said?
Yes. So just to make it simpler, if anyone wants to look at page 27, Attachment One, I'm looking at the Normal Hurtsalk Center. The lowest rate we offer for fee is for nonprofit, $8. And that's the number, that's letter A. Number B is resident slash private, and that's $130. If you go over to page 26, left of that, it's a similar discrepancy at the Beleri Center and similar at the Senior Center. It seems we charge a lower fee for a nonprofit than we do for our own residents. I'm just curious if that's standard practice or if anyone knows when that happened in City of Costa Mesa.
So as a, as a practitioner, I can tell you, it is standard practice. When we look at what are the lowest rates in the rec world, the lowest rates in the rec world are typically linked to nonprofit users with the idea that most of your nonprofits are, you know, hopefully intending to do a community good. You might have nonprofit youth leagues, nonprofit sports leagues, not other nonprofits that are, exist to the benefit of the public where the resident renter is more, you might see it for birthday parties, quinceañeras, those kind of things. But it's more of like a private for my benefit as a resident rather than where we think of nonprofits as existing for the benefit of others. And then we do typically see a premium on non-resident renters because we want to prioritize our residents. And what we also hear is the idea of your residents do contribute through their tax base where non-residents do not. So those would be three common classifications that we see and your rate structure aligns to what we see in other communities.
Thank you for that clarification. It is very helpful in understanding why there's discrepancy. My question is now going to be to staff, and apologies on doing this earlier, but are we fully recouping our costs with the nonprofit fees?
The answer would probably be no.
Okay. Do we know if we're recouping our costs with the resident fees?
That would also be a no.
At what point in the scale are we recouping our costs?
So that would be, that would require the cost recovery fee study, which we were halfway through when COVID hit. And we would, our intention is to resume that full recovery cost fee study this year to hopefully bring back to you what that rate would be.
Okay. So I understand, basically, you got hit by pandemic. The work we're trying to do is now being pushed out to now. I have some comments on this. I might have a, so to motion. I may have a certain emotion, but for now, I just want to highlight for the public that there's a discrepancy between nonprofit and resident. So thank you.
Any other questions?
Yep.
Yes, Mayor Protam?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. For staff, so on attachment one, page two, under business license processing fees. I believe I raised this earlier in our budget discussions, but is, I just want confirmation. This is what we charge businesses for their licensing fee is $25?
This is correct.
Okay, so I noticed the option about a yearly inflator that may be allowable. I thought we would, the only way we can modify this is through a vote of the people. Is that correct?
I think you're thinking about the business license tax.
Okay, so it's a tax, so this is just a separate?
This is just a fee, a processing fee per se.
All right, but the tax though is limited to?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Councilmember Reynolds?
Thank you. I had a follow-up question, similar questions to Councilmember Chavez and a follow-up clarification. So if we're back on page 26, so Councilmember Chavez had mentioned the difference between, you know, nonprofit and then the resident slash private rates. Can someone describe to me what, if we look a little bit further up on the same page, like within the downtown recreational center, we have rates for resident slash nonprofit different from resident slash private? So what is the difference between resident slash nonprofit and then just a nonprofit rate?
Councilmember, can you take me to, can you direct me one more time? I'm trying to find the reference you're looking at.
Let me give us, so are you on page 26?
I'm at the top. Let's start with, so at the top of the page, I see recreation and facility rental fees?
Yes.
And then do you have a fee number on the far left?
Yes, so 34A, for example, is a gymnasium rental for resident slash nonprofit.
Yes. Okay, I have a...
Yeah, so how, why, how is the A resident slash nonprofit different from like 39A where we just say nonprofit?
So I think in this case, I'm giving you my best answer based on what we see in other communities. So the idea here is that you could have a nonprofit that is a non-resident nonprofit. It's a nonprofit that doesn't exist to serve Costa Mesa. It is just potentially doing something in Costa Mesa. And I think this idea here in A and B is we do prioritize Costa Mesa residents and we do prioritize nonprofits that are established to serve Costa Mesa rather than if I was coming out, let's say I'm from some other jurisdiction and I want to conduct a tournament or something and I'm a nonprofit group, it doesn't mean... So I think that's what we're trying to do is identify the nonprofit user as opposed to a private renter, like I mentioned, where I still want to prioritize a Costa Mesa resident. But if I'm just renting the gymnasium for a private use, then there will be a higher fee than if I'm renting it for a nonprofit use. But I think the key here is that if we look at letter A, it's a Costa Mesa-based nonprofit renter.
And what would a nonprofit that's not Costa Mesa-based pay?
I think they might, I'm not positive, but they might pay a non-resident rate because they, I don't think they qualify as commercial. Do you see the non-resident rate is less than the commercial rates? So commercial, we typically, I am straight, resident as will be me. I apologize that we don't have the director in-house this evening, but I think those are reasonable estimates.
Good evening. Thank you, thank you, Terry. Thank you, members of the council. You know, I think the fees that are in place unfortunately were adopted at different times. I cannot speak to why the fee structure is the way it is. I know that that's definitely something we could, we can look into. And I believe our Parks and Recreation, our Parks and Community Services Commission had been inquiring about fee structures for different facilities. So I think that would be a great opportunity for us to look into each of the program areas, maybe do some aligning in terms of how we structure the rates and then how we apply them, whether it's, you know, differentiating nonprofits, you know, that are Costa Mesa-based or not. I think to Terry's point, you know, as long as they're serving the residents of Costa Mesa, I think that's imperative. But I think there, you know, has been just differentiation between how they're implemented over the years.
Okay, and is that, is that an ongoing activity right now with the commission? The Parks and Community Service Commission?
We have not started it yet. I know that they had asked questions, but we wanted to, you know, finish up on what Carolyn and her team were working on in terms of the consolidation. And then we would start looking into making changes if necessary.
Okay, and I understand that part of the goal of the consolidation is to identify some maybe inconsistencies, right? So solved, success. Yeah, I'm certainly interested in that. I think you're hearing sort of, you know, interest in really making these facilities accessible to residents, organizations serving residents, making sure that that's a priority. Certainly consistency for the sake of making this sort of easy to read and understand is valuable. So I support that work at the commission. It's actually work that I know we were talking about when I was a parks commissioner once upon a time. So I know some of these things take time. I had one other question and certainly related as well. We've had some discussions about how to make facilities accessible. For example, the pool that we have, our public pool for residents, youth, for example, who cannot afford the fees. What is our approach? And I'm assuming that our approach there is that we're kind of creating our own program where we're saying we're going to, you know, allocate some funds to basically pay the fees internally. Is that, is that our approach?
Are you talking about more of a scholarship-type program or?
How do we make our recreational facilities that have a fee basis here accessible to residents who cannot afford it?
I think there's a variety of ways we can do it. One is working...
How are we doing it?
Oh, how are we doing it? I don't know, you know, I think implementation of it, one example would be our, the MOU that we have with the SOI where it stipulates that they can use our facilities at no cost would be a great way to do it. I know we've had conversations with, you know, staff at SOI about doing it. We just have not implemented, you know, for example, a swim day. But it's something that I have spoken recently with their staff about trying to get that on the calendar, trying to make sure we're allocating time in our facilities to honor that, that MOU.
Okay, and then you were starting to brainstorm maybe other ways. You mentioned a scholarship. Are there, what other ways can that be done?
Well, we have a scholarship program that I believe is available through the foundation. I don't think that we've done much in terms of that recently, but I know that is a program that had existed prior to me coming to the city. So I think that's something we'd talked about trying to reengage or working with other partner organizations. Or I think, you know, based on the comments, trying to have times that are available at a lower cost. I know we've been in discussions with it, like with our tennis center operator or through that RFP process about identifying times where we can offer special sessions for lower income residents or for people that couldn't afford whatever the fee was.
Okay, and I appreciate that that, probably that discussion is a little bit out of scope of this agenda item. So maybe my question for the city manager or Ms. Molina is if there's interest in, you know, making sure that there's some, you know, no or very low cost access for residents who, you know, cannot afford the fee basis, where would we need to have those discussions to make sure it sort of fits in any cost recovery model or other, you know, related activities?
Just for my purposes, it may be best as we go through the cost recovery fee study this year, we can incorporate that into our study and ride that feedback back to you.
Okay, yeah, that would be great. I recall discussion that we once had a sliding scale fee, for example, for some of the youth programs. So it'd be great to pull those into, into that discussion. I have one last question about fees, and this may be more related to the business side. We've had a lot of discussions, I think, again, especially coming out of COVID, dealing with lower staffing, dealing with sort of surges in applications. Certainly, you know, when we do this fee study, we're going to be coming up with a number that says it, you know, it costs X dollars to deliver this exercise or service. But that number is going to depend, like if we say we want to do things twice as fast, right? Then the number is going to be twice as high or it's probably not that simple. So I guess again, that would be within the study. Can we include that kind of discussion in the study too to say, I don't know what the numbers are now, but if, if right now our response time on a specific service is one month and we say, well, what would it cost for that to be two weeks? Is that something that we can explore in the cost recovery study? So that we can, council can make informed decisions on, you know, do we want to, you know, sort of support a faster delivery time, which we understand is going to be higher cost?
My only concern, I mean, we can definitely look at it, but my only concern is we're limited by staff's ability. So there may not be that many options to have expedited processing fees type of a situation depending on what specific fee we'd be looking at. But we can look at to see which ones, if any, could be expedited.
Okay, and again, tell me if this is out of scope of this particular discussion, but I'd be interested in council's interest in whether we should, you know, where we can explore strategies to perhaps, what do we have it, you know, have additional sort of contract basis, there's a cost to it, right? To have sort of, you know, standby contract service for particular business services to be able to provide faster response. Is that, is that this discussion or is that?
That would be part of the cost recovery process. We would be able to identify which processes would be, it would be under that type of a scope.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? No? Okay, let's open it up to public comment.
Good evening, council again. First of all, again, thank you to Director Molina for putting together this master fee schedule. I think it's actually incredibly important work for the city. As you probably noticed, it was pretty weighty. And so we are charging a lot of fees and it's good to actually have them all in one place just from a transparency perspective. I am also proud to be a member of the revenue subcommittee and of the FIPAC, which helped look at this. I'm not authorized to speak on behalf of that committee tonight, but I do want to say generally that I was incredibly pleased to see how well the subcommittee worked in this capacity to review the master fee schedule. As you saw, it was a fairly lengthy and technical document. My fellow members, Wendy and Boris, were incredibly helpful and very wise in looking through these. So I think that that small group setting really helped to move this project forward really well. So just wanted to just make those few comments to support the work of the revenue subcommittee and of the FIPAC generally. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? No? Anyone on Zoom?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I'll close public comment. Would anybody like to make a motion? Oh, there you go. Go ahead.
Hitting all the wrong buttons, sure. I move that we support staff recommendation.
Okay, seconded by Councilmember Harper, is that all right?
Yes.
Okay, good. Do you have any comments just in support of your motion?
No, I appreciate that everything staff is doing to continue to just, you know, consolidate and improve services. You know, Carol, since you've joined this city, you've done an incredible amount of work, working with paper-based documentation, extremely outdated tools. And I appreciate every, every step you're taking to improve our processes and make our fees and other materials more transparent and accessible to residents. So thank you for the work. I think yourself and our director of Parks and Community Services and city manager heard some of the interest related to how we set the fees when we go through that updated fee analysis. So I'm looking forward to that discussion, but thank you for your work on this.
Councilmember Harper, do you have anything to add?
I do not.
Okay, excellent. Okay, let's call for the question. Oh, I'm sorry.
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 I know it's late. I'll be quick.
I know it's late.
Great presentation. When it does come back, I would want to see us have resident fees be closer aligned with nonprofit fees. Apart from that, I applaud any process to be more efficient and effective. We are competing with other cities and we're competing with other cities for a lot of things, including housing, businesses, et cetera. So anything you can do in that regard is well deserved and well needed. So thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Mayor, may I ask, I apologize for interrupting this moment, but I just want to check with the city manager and finance director if we have everything, if the motion carries, did we get all the information we needed from city council?
Yes, I believe so. And thank you, Terry. I know that this was not an easy task for you. It's Herculean to put all those different schedules together along with Carolyn and her team. So thank you so much. This is a big step forward for transparency and consistency. So thank you for your help. I know this was not an easy task.
Perfect, okay.
Let's call for the question.
Councilmember Reynolds? Councilmember Chavez? Councilmember Harper? Councilmember Gamaros? Mayor Protam Harlan?
Yes.
Mayor Stevens?
Yes.
Motion carries 6-0.
Okay, before we do our adjournment, does anybody have anything that they want to add? No? Yes, okay.
Past weekend, and some of you may have known him, a good friend of mine, Tom Pollitt, passed away. Yeah, he had, he, you know, I've lost track, I've lost track how many times he battled cancer. And he served on the finance committee here. I know he's very involved, just a lovable character. And he was a great leader. He did a lot of things in the community and he did it without a lot of, very unpretentious. And the last thing he did, and I'll mention this one thing, and I told him it was crazy, he could never do it, but he did it. And when he is 75 with cancer, he started a Christian school for kids that couldn't afford private schooling. And I think it was a thousand, it's $1,000 a year tuition. And he gets all volunteers and we have about 60 kids. I serve on the board along with some other gentlemen. So it's the last thing he did while he's battling cancer and he got that done. And it's going and it continues and he's got structure set up where it's going to continue. So extraordinary individual. His, there's a memorial service room on Friday, June 16th, 2:00 PM at the Harbor Light Church. You're welcome if you knew him to show up.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, I served with him on the, on the FIPAC. He was a very active and a very effective participant on that. So, okay, before I do the adjournment, I just want to say it's, we're still on the 6th of June, that's my wife's birthday. And so happy birthday to Amy. And my daughter graduates from college, DePaul University on Saturday. So congratulations, Olivia. So we're going to adjourn the meeting in honor and memory of Frank Randall and Tom Pollitt. May they rest in peace.